Good evening, everybody. I am going to call to order the April 24th, 2025 Planning Board Workshop. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we've called to order our number two is Workshop Purposes and Format Overview. Kelly, if you want to pull that up, I will let you have at it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, again, this is a workshop between or with the Planning Board. The Town Council has been invited this evening, and they are in the audience with the exception of Councilor Fager. So just as a reminder, we had a work session on March 12th with the Planning Board to go over a list essentially of land use regulation amendments that the Board may want to consider for 2025. The outcome of that work session was to tackle the four bulleted items that you see in bold on the screen here first. And from here, after we walk through those amendments this evening, we'll have a discussion, at least my hope is to have a discussion at the end, giving some more direction to staff as to what you'd like to see next and where we go from here. So, the intent this evening is, again, to go through the 2024 Legislative Session Updates. So these are the updates from, that resulted from the 2024 Legislature. Typically, I will say typically, we do this in the fall. However, I was not here in the fall, so we are doing this now. Next would be the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, followed by a new Solar Energy Ordinance, and then we will discuss the 28 Performance Overlay District Removal. And I think the Chairman has some other things that you wanted to add as far as meeting procedure?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, this is a little bit different of a layout of what we usually do at a Planning Board level. I don't think we've ever really invited the Council to a meeting before to have a bit of an open discussion with the Board, nor do we necessarily have a strictly public comment section that is not related to a public hearing which has an application, which we're in front of an applicant, so on and so forth. We don't have anything here that is related to an application, about an application. So I'm comfortable with allowing the public input, but I am going to be very specific in when you are talking to please do not bring up any, anything that's under review, any projects that are under review or proposed projects, you know, anything that's kind of in the queue right now. I'm sure there are people here that want to discuss them. We can't. It does put us in a very bad spot if we do discuss those projects and, you know, say there is a negative comment about a project that's going to be coming before us, and we disagree with the project, or say no to the project, or ask them to change something about the project. They have the ability to say, well, you are now biased because of the April 24th meeting that five residents came up and talked about one project and said how terrible they thought the project was. That is going to put this Board in a very bad position, which is exactly why we don't traditionally have a public input in our workshops, in our conceptual designs, everything like that. But again, there are no applicants here tonight, and I would just please ask you to respect those rules. If you don't, I am going to ask you to stop. So, when we get to public input, please come up and talk, but be very mindful of what you are going to say. All right? Thank you. Anything from the Board before we let Kelly start to move on here? I feel like I covered everything. Kelly?
Okay. So, I'm actually going to turn it over to Kristen, because she took this over.
Fantastic.
But just to recap, this is specific to the 2024 legislative changes that were put into law that affect our zoning ordinance and subdivision and site plan regulations. So, Kristen?
Okay. Hi. So let's see, there were two on the memorandum that to highlight. One pertains...
Does she have a microphone?
Yeah, she does.
What?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. One pertains to the definition of a butter, so that, there should be a, yeah, this memo. It first outlines what the legislative update requires and why, and then there's a section that goes over the existing, sorry, yeah, the old language under site plan for a butter, and then another existing and proposed under subdivision regulations.
So, if I'm looking at this right, 1.04 definitions, our old language is on the first page, the new language is on the...
The new language is highlighted in yellow.
Correct. Okay. So we have, we have the new language for the a butter that is getting put in the site plan regulations as well as the subdivision like regulations. I would assume the verbiage is essentially the same in both of them, but they're going, one's going into subdivision, one's going into site plan.
Right, and that's just to bring it up to the state requirement.
What has been, yeah, through legislation. Did we change this?
I'm going to, I want to speak to that point that you're getting to, if you don't mind.
Please.
So in the blue comment is my comment that I added. So this is in addition to the legislative update. So the legislative update added terminal, or added to the definition to include essentially adjacent properties. The, I believe, maybe this time last year or last summer of 2024, the Board did discuss amending the definition of a butter in a couple of parts, one being it should be added to the zoning ordinance, because it actually is not, I don't think it's actually defined in there, as well as subdivision and site plan regulations. And then the other piece to that was to increase the properties included to be a radius of 400 feet, and to specifically use our GIS system to do that. So, the short way to put it is essentially, right now, when you go to our online GIS mapping system, there's an option to generate in a butters list. Typically, right now, we see people submit based on a 300-foot radius, because that's the automatic number that is generated in the system. So we're seeing, my point is, we're seeing that radius already. My understanding is last summer, when the Board discussed this, the ask was to increase that to 400 feet, and I believe it went to the Council, was discussed, and then it was never formally acted on, though. So I brought it back to your attention if you wanted to include that as well into this legislative amendment that we're required to do. We can certainly do that. So again, it would be to include what the statute says, which is 672.3, and add the point to include a butters within a radius of 400 feet.
Okay. So, so just to recap, the, our original intent last year with changing the a butter verbiage was to essentially broaden who was considered in a butter. That had come up through a few different site plan applications, public hearing processes, that we had people that felt as though they should have been notified but did not get notified.
Correct.
The Board recognized that and agreed with it, and said, what can we do to expand out our butter list a little bit more? So, so what we had discussed is going to stay, but we're also adding what's required by 672.3.
That is what I'm, what staff is suggesting?
Yeah.
I just wanted to call out that by law, at this point, we're required to add verbiage about adjacent properties.
Yep.
However, this Board, as I understand it last summer, was more agreeable to essentially making it a broader area, and that is the 400-foot radius.
Correct.
So yes, we would comply with the minimum state law and expand that to the 400-foot radius.
Okay.
And I think, just a point to add to that, it really, I, I think it is beneficial to expand that area. Like I said, we're already seeing applications come in with that, essentially that list. So in terms of somebody maybe making the argument that this is more costly, because you have to pay for each a butter, I don't think that's entirely true, because again, we're seeing those frequently, that list is generated anyways. And then I do think that there are instances where you have a sliver of land, and it's very minor, however, it limits that a butter notification area. And so there are folks that aren't getting that notice that reasonably should. So I think that this addresses that concern by expanding that radius to 400 feet.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I recall, one thing that we talked about last summer, there's a note in here about any case, basically with the Town of Londonderry, it'll include all the butters to the Londonderry. And one of the things that got brought up is something like Musquash Road, where if somebody is on the north end of Musquash Road, then essentially anybody who abuts Musquash, not Musquash Road, but the conservation...
The parcel, yeah.
Essentially becomes in a butter.
Yes, thank you. That is another point that I didn't...
Yeah, it was essentially if the Town of Londonderry, or an easement of the Town of Londonderry wasn't a butter to the project, whoever abuts that would get notified.
Yep, that's, so that's, as Jason highlighted, that's kind of the second half of this paragraph is exactly that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, you're good. I left that out unintentionally, but yes.
Great. Anne, you had your hand up.
Yeah, because when I was reading it the first time, I'm looking at the phrase directly across the street or stream.
Right.
And then I'm wondering, what happened in the backyard? I mean, we have, you know, people who abut the property in the backyard, but it didn't mention anything about that. So I was worried about how that was phrased, but I'm glad that everything's changed now to what we have, the new language.
Anything else from the Board? All right.
I think it's, it's good, Mr. Chair. Also, just to note that a butter as, in case of a codaminium or other collective form of ownership is spelled out here, is that the officers of the collective association do receive the notice.
Question, are we going to keep the language of a butter to the property owned by the town?
Yeah, that would...
Because that, that makes it a huge group of people.
Correct. It would be staying with, with what we had originally discussed. We're just, we have to add in the language of the state, which is actually less than what is, what we already have been working on. So we're adding in the language of the state and then topping it off with...
So what we'll end up doing is, I just wanted to give you both side by side so you could see the differences. What we'll do is just incorporate the state definition by reference of the statute, and then we'll keep what you see in blue as the definition.
Correct.
So it's in there by reference, but it limits confusion by having all the extra, extra words, if that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, number two.
All right, this one has to do with parking requirements. I'm not super clear on it, so Kelly, you might have to help me out on this one. There were restrictions on how many parking spaces can be required?
Yeah. Basically, the legislation change, or was added or changed that said you can't require more than one and a half residential parking spaces per unit for studio and one-bedroom units under 1,000 square feet. It's a multiple. So we essentially took that and added two lines in our parking calculation table, which is in the site plan regulations, and just said exactly that. So that if that scenario comes up, when staff and the Board are conducting its review, we would call that out and say, nope, you can't require more than one and a half spaces if this is the scenario before you. For example, right now, our requirement, as you can see, is two spaces per dwelling unit for multifamily. So if we had a multifamily development that had studio and one-bedroom units under 1,000 square feet, that meet, sorry, that meet the requirements for workforce housing, we would have to adjust the parking calculation as such. So a bit of a math problem there, but just calling out in our regulations that we recognize that was changed in the, at state law level, so we've added that language to the parking table.
Okay.
I've got a question about that.
Yes.
Below the Table B, Partial Off-Street Parking and Loading, it says, no more than 1.5 residential parking space per unit are required or permitted.
For studio, you mean the yellow highlight?
Yeah.
So we can probably strike the, well, I suppose you would leave permitted, right, in case they are proposing to have more? So we could, I guess you could have it either way.
So...
You can have two cars.
Well, you're talking about the parking spaces.
Right.
So I'm saying if somebody is arguing that they want more spaces, I guess it's up to the Board if you wanted to allow that, but you can't, you can't force them to have more.
I mean, you might have a work truck and a regular car or something like that if you live in there, so.
So I can understand this clearly. If we had an application come in front of us that said they want to have three parking spaces per unit, we, they would need a waiver from the regulation?
Possibly.
Am I understanding that correctly?
So, the way that we have it proposed, this language right here, I would, so...
Well, I mean, the proposed language comes...
They don't, they don't need it, no, they wouldn't need a waiver.
The proposed language comes from the state, it's just, it's...
They wouldn't need a waiver, and again, this is specific to workforce housing. I think the main point is the Board cannot require more than.
Okay.
So we can probably strike some of this.
Yeah, the permitted is very confusing.
Yeah, I think it is just the permitted.
We can strike that.
It sounds like you can't have more than that.
That's what, yeah, that's what I mean. So we could get rid of the permitted.
Yep, we can do that. Thank you.
So if you look at the spirit of what was trying to be done, the, whoever drafted that language and conquered, in my opinion, is they were trying to make it cheaper for some developers, so that there could be more of this kind of housing, and so the towns, and some towns are much more restrictive than our town, sometimes, to try and stop this kind of housing would say you have to have five spaces for every 1,000-square-foot space to try and stop a developer from, from building. And so, I think, I think I'm pretty close.
Yep.
And so, yeah, so I think if you strike the word permitted, because some developers would want to provide two spots per unit.
Yep.
That, that takes care of the problem.
Yeah.
You guys are, you're spot on. That's why we have work sessions. You guys can help.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question too, for staff. So, John?
Yep.
What's dictating the size of a parking space today? Is it the site plan regulations?
Correct.
Subdivision?
Our site plan.
Site plan? Is there anything happening at a, you know, organizational level, like a professional organization level or at national level regarding making the minimum parking sizes bigger, spot sizes bigger? Because, you know, cars are just getting bigger.
I have not, I have not heard anything getting bigger. I've, you always hear everything might to get smaller.
Yep.
Less pavement.
Yep, but cars just keep going in the opposite direction, so...
Correct.
It seems like the trucks, trucks are getting bigger, longer.
Yeah, so, okay.
We had one, I think you were the one that pointed out, a truck would hang out beyond the parking space.
Yeah, you get a crew cab long, long bed, that's a country mile, at the two spacer, lengthwise.
John, is our typical parking spot eight by 20 feet?
Nine by 20.
Nine by 20.
There you go.
I can fit an eight-foot, two-by-four in the cab of my truck and shut the doors, but I can't fit it in the back of my bed. How things have changed. All right, moving on.
So, I'm hearing that, well, we can address this at the very end, I suppose, as far as action.
Yeah, I, what, I mean, what does that look like? Is this something that goes to a...
So, in this, so with respect to the a butter definition, that is a zoning amendment, and so that would need a recommendation from this Board to the Council?
Correct.
And we would go through a hearing process with them?
Correct.
With this one, we should have, this one is a site plan amendment, and so we will need a hearing with this Board. It does not require Council. So at the very end, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, we can recap where you stand on each item and go from there.
And, and then set forth the hearing form.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I'll move on to inclusionary housing?
Sure.
So, next is the inclusionary housing section of the zoning ordinance, so also referred to as workforce housing. So just to try and stay in the context in which this amendment was requested, the request was to look at where and how workforce housing is permitted. So, please keep in mind that we are required by law to have this ordinance, and so we are not proposing to remove it in its entirety. We are proposing to change where it is permitted and how. So currently...
Can I add on to that a little bit, Kelly?
Yes.
So, I believe the conversation came up, and again, we cannot get rid of workforce housing. It is required through law, correct?
Correct.
Required through state law. So today, the way it stands is workforce housing is allowed in AR1, R3, C1, C2, C3, C4, MUC, the Performance Overlay Districts, they're, they're through conditional use permit, and they're permitted inside of the PUD. So the conversation was, how can we, can we make any adjustments to reduce where the workforce housing is, is permitted, essentially?
Correct. Exactly right.
Thank you.
So with that ask, staff looked through the ordinance, because when you propose the way in which workforce housing is permitted, as the Chair said, it is permitted by conditional use permit. We then have to look at the language in the ordinance itself and adjust that accordingly. So, before you, the red line document, staff has proposed to...
Can I back you up for two seconds?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Kelly.
Yes.
I know you're getting on a roll there.
Oh, just...
Can, can you describe or go through what the conditional use permit process is?
I was getting there. I was getting there. So, specific to workforce housing or general?
Yeah, I think in general, what conditional use permit means.
Generally, a conditional use permit, when we're talking about, not the Conservation Overlay District, as most are familiar with, but by conditional use permits specific to a use, you will see a full site plan, and you will see a conditional use permit with associated criteria specific to that conditional use permit process. So in the example of workforce housing, there's specific criteria for a conditional use permit, which the use being workforce housing, that, there's criteria that need to be met, that needs to be evaluated before the Board can move forward and review the site plan itself. And when I say the site plan itself, I mean all of the technical aspects, engineering, drainage, traffic, et cetera. You should be, you're evaluating the conditional use permit criteria first, and if that is met, then you move on to the site plan. So that's what we're talking about in this instance. So currently, again, the inclusionary housing, workforce housing, is permitted in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 districts, and it's not permitted in three districts, sorry, four districts. So before you, the red line document is what staff has proposed as changes, open to feedback, and not married to this at all. So we have proposed to allow multifamily workforce housing by right in the AR1 and R3 and PUD districts. We have proposed to keep small workforce housing development, and I'll go over these definitions in a moment, but as it stands currently, which is by conditional use permit, and we added the ability to do that by conditional use permit in the R3 district. And then we have our live-work units. We did not make any changes to that, where those are permitted, so...
Kelly?
Would you like me to talk about what a live-work unit is?
Yeah, what's the difference between dwelling multifamily workforce and small workforce housing development and live-work development?
So, the workforce housing generally, okay, that is the standard state definition where it can be owner or renter occupied, and there are requirements with respect to income. The small workforce housing development, same criteria with respect to income requirements. However, our zoning ordinance defines that as workforce housing permitted in AR1 to accommodate structures with up to four units on an individual lot and designed to be compatible with the context of the neighborhood. So we're talking more of a smaller scale workforce housing.
Do we have any small workforce housing developments in Londonderry?
So...
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I almost said neighborworks, but that's not. Those are townhomes.
Yeah.
But that's the smallest, smallest workforce housing development.
Is, is the small workforce housing development part of the state requirement, or is that in addition to that the town...
That's in addition to. That's a Town of Londonderry item, as far as I understand it, that we've had in our ordinance, I believe, since we, since we put in workforce housing.
Since the multifamily workforce housing was put into place, which, do we know, John, do you know when that was?
Hmm.
2010?
Workforce housing was 2010.
Was it 2010, right?
Yeah, that was a...
And then it was updated in 2015.
So just to, the live-work units, the definition in our zoning ordinance states a single unit consisting of both a workspace for occupations like commerce, professional services, artisan or similar, along with a residential component that is occupied by the entrepreneur. The live-work unit shall be the primary dwelling of the occupant and is intended for non-residential zones as applicable. So that is not required by law. That is something that we have, we have, we've added.
Now...
But again, we haven't proposed any change.
I would ask the same question again. Do we have any live-work units in Londonderry?
Not to my knowledge, but...
I don't think so. I don't think so either. Can you think anything, John?
No.
The only developments that I'm aware of, and you would think I should be aware of them all, but are the ones that you all know. So the ones along Stonehenge?
Yeah.
The Woodmore, which is neighborworks, and then Wallace Farm.
Yeah.
So unless there's some live-work unit that I'm unaware of?
No.
I do not know of any.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, the workforce housing is income restricted housing, right? It's not non-income restricted housing, standard multifamily housing?
Correct. However, McGregor, for example, has a mix. Correct, however, um, McGregor, for example, has a mix of market rate units and workforce units. So, in some instances, you do have what we talk about as workforce housing developments, but they do have a mix of units.
So, can I ask, um, we're including it by, we're only including it in the AR and R3 and the PUD areas. Which, I think when we were tar, discussing the workforce housing, um, the few projects that have come through. Many of the concerns were that they were in areas that weren't necess, were off the beaten path, weren't on a major road. Um, which seems to be more applicable to AR1 type zones. Why aren't we reversing that and saying that they should be in like C1 zones and C2 zones and C3 zones versus AR1 zones?
We can certainly do that, this is just what we proposed.
Yeah, so that's really the conversation we want to have. We, we, we have to have it somewhere.
Yeah.
Where do we want to put it?
And additionally, I think, like, there isn't, there really isn't any undeveloped R3 land left in the town, so.
So, I, I thought process was, wasn't to think about multifamily and where we permit multifamily. Um, because that's been a conversation, so keeping that in the back of my mind, I know that's a topic that we want to discuss in the future. Um, and so, having a multifamily development, in this instance, we're talking workforce housing allowed in all of our commercial areas. I'm not sure that's the direction the board wants to go, so just my thought process was put it in R3.
Yeah.
Um, but again, this is just to get, this is a starting point for a discussion, so I'm not, I have no, uh, you know, particular preference. It's just the way I, I thought it through, but.
What's the, on the spreadsheet here, there's a three after the P, what's the three?
So, that refers you to the inclusionary housing section of the zoning ordinance, which then, um, goes through the specific requirements for workforce housing. So, it's making clear that they have to follow that ordinance, they can't just do it, um, by right. They have specific criteria that they have to follow, so we call that out.
Mr. D?
So, just, just for clarification on process, a person who has a piece of land that's in a zone that's not workforce. Could that person go to ZBA? And, and, and go through the five points of law and prove a hardship or whatever, and, and ZBA could allow that?
So, if you're saying a person has a commercial property and they're not, uh, workforce housing isn't permitted by right or otherwise? Yes, they could go ask for a variance and go through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just go back to the point?
Good.
Um, again, what, my whole point with the AR, having it in AR1 versus some of the commercial districts was just that, I was here on the board when we heard many of these workforce housing units. And the biggest concern was that they were buried in the middle of residential areas that had poor access to the sites. And typically, your commercially zoned areas have better access to major roadways. So, that, that was my, it just seems a little bit backwards to what I heard at these, at these meetings. When we were, when we were hearing these projects, and with the R3 zone, if you look at the zoning map, there really isn't any R3 zone left. So, it's kind of like saying, you can have your workforce housing in this zone, but we don't have any available land for it. So, is that also like writing it out of the regs, um, if the state or federal government's requiring us to have it?
I like the concept of the commercial leaning side of this as opposed to the residential leaning side of this. I, I do like what you're saying about that.
So.
I haven't looked this way once, let me see if I can, I've been like this the whole time. Guys?
Oh, did you have a?
I, so, commercial is less space in town than AR1. AR1 consumes probably the most zone in town, so if we did, and our goal was to, to reduce down the workforce housing, putting it in commercial helps achieve that better than keeping it in AR1, and also fits what Giovanni's saying.
Yeah, and I, I, I think it, um, you know, again, what was the biggest issue with, and this was before, well before my time. Um, McGregor Cut, you were putting it in the middle of a residential neighborhood, essentially, was, was what we heard over and over again. So, I think to your point, that plays good.
Yeah, I was, it's a little redundant now, but I, I, I agree. I think, um, to, to your point, you know, the, the roads are better built in a commercial area for the amount of traffic that would be required in a multifamily. Um, you're not going to be dropping, uh, apartment building in someone's backyard, you know, potentially, um.
That's what I'm concerned with.
Yeah, and it, it's, it's just.
The four families, yeah.
Yeah, it, it just, it just seems like a better use of the, of the land, or of the, um, use, I should say. Uh, to put it in the commercial areas as opposed to the AR.
So, just another point, as you're discussing and thinking about how, where you want to permit it, um, is the process by which. So, again, right now, there's a conditional use permit process, uh, for workforce housing. The thought process that we had, if you were to, even if you were to, um, allow it by right, is to still take the language for the, essentially the CUP criteria, and just keep that as the requirement. If you were to change it, the permission to be by, by right, so, if that makes sense. So, essentially, from six, three, one onward, that's a CUP process with the laundry list of criteria. I, I would not take that away if you were to change it to be permitted by right in commercial. I would just keep that, just remove the CUP process, if that's what you were going to do.
Yeah, so there's still some guidance.
Still some guidance, still some, keeping the same expectations, if you will, as you have now.
Doesn't make sense.
Or you just keep it as a CUP.
Oh, granted.
So, real quick, give me a little bit, I will let you talk. Um, I want to get through the board first, and then I'll let you come up.
So, so, that said, then why wouldn't we add it to, to, um, um, MUC also, mixed use commercial? Why not have a pizza shop downstairs and an apartment upstairs that's, you know what I mean? Hmm, just a thought, see what you're saying.
I think, I think that's a good idea, that's why we do have, uh, you know, mixed, mixed use.
Yeah.
But back, um, this goes back quite a few years, when we were talking about, uh, eliminating the P, uh, POD on Route 102. Was looking where to put, uh, some multifamily in there with the commercial. So, it has been discussed, and I think it's worthy of consideration.
Anything from this side of the board? Anything else? If you want to come up real quick?
I'm writing a couple of things down, but my pen ran out of ink. So, just a couple of comments.
If you could just name an address, please.
Uh, Greg Carson, nineteen Token Hill Drive.
Thank you.
And for those who don't know me, uh, I've been the director of the US Department of Housing and Urban Development in New Hampshire for about twenty years. Was the zoning board chairman in Lononderry for about a decade.
Could you repeat that? I was.
I was the, I was the director of the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for the last twenty years. I left the, I retired a couple of months ago. Um, and I've been, you know, working on workforce housing issues and zoning. Like I said, I was the chairman of the zoning board, you know, for all of the nineties for the most part. But, uh, so I just wanted to make a couple of comments in, in what you're saying. So, the, the goal of workforce housing is not just to provide housing, but to provide housing where there's access to what is often described by some folks as livable, walkable communities. People who could, you know, live near where they worked. So, having, uh, workforce housing along like 102, where there's commercial spaces, like as Arthur said. Um, you know, you, you could, if Woodmont Orchards had been realized to what it was originally going to be. Um, you could have had workforce housing there, where people could actually work there and around the stores, et cetera. Up on Exit Five, where there's transportation hub, um, you know, commercial area along there on that section. That's the goal of workforce housing, is to make it not just affordable, make it affordable, to make it easily accessed by transportation services. People could, you know, who don't drive, could walk to the grocery store, things along that line. So, putting it in, you know, AR1 or AR, um, R3, you know, it, you know, you may be able to build in affordable units in there. But, um, you know, doesn't really provide the goal of trying to get people to where they can work without having a car, or maybe one car shared or something along that line. So, putting it in the commercial areas is typically where that's done, um, pretty much across the, the state and all of New England. The, uh, issue of the small, um, uh, small workforce development, uh, when that was done originally, the proposal was for, you know, uh, areas where, um, you have central downtown areas. You know, Manchester, any, you know, Derry, that. And it's typically what you see in, you know, in and around, you know, Boston, Massachusetts, Lawrence, it's, you know, triple deckers. You know, and that falls in line with the financing that's available for, uh, that kind of housing. Where, uh, one to three units are financed, uh, with loan guarantees. And, uh, usually it's requires the, an owner occupant, and they get reduced interest rates and guarantees on the loan, so they zero down payments, things along that line. There was an, an attempt to do an expansion of that here in New Hampshire about five years ago, with, uh, New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, uh, providing, you know, some loan programs to do those things. But there's not a lot of communities that, you know, really were interested in doing that, because most of the places that had downtown areas had pretty much been built out. Um, so, there, there are a few opportunities to do that. If you wanted to do something along that line, if you took, you know, instead of having workforce housing apartments, you could do a small planned, you know, development where you had a neighborhood of, you know, multifamily, uh, multi, um, tiered housing. And it can be whether town housing, townhouses, or, you know, uh, double or triple deckers. And that, um, and that also falls in line with, uh, the, um, uh, the way that financing is done for workforce or low income housing. Most projects now are done through what's called the, uh, LI-Tech program, which is a, uh, a tax advantage program that developers are able to use. Um, states are granted a, uh, a set amount each year. Um, it's actually managed by the IRS, not HUD, surprisingly. Um, and, uh, those tax credits are then sold it to the marketplace of investors, so that a nonprofit like Neighborworks can raise money to build housing. But typically, that's one of many different sources that they have to pile in together. And so, when they're doing that kind of financing, where the units are being placed is, um, it really, there's a lot of restrictions that go on top of that. So, for example, um, just recently in, well, it's almost been a year now, in Salem, down, if you're familiar where, um, the Tuscan, uh, restaurant was originally, not the development, the racetrack. But where the original restaurant was, right across the parking lot, um, uh, we were able to get, uh, Joe Farrell, the developer, to donate that land for a dollar, uh, because he needed the, the write-off. Um, and, uh, so, we, first, we're going to put veterans housing in there, and then we, um, we couldn't get enough, um, uh, credits or, um, vouchers for that development. So, we worked with a, a develop, a for-profit developer who actually built the units with, um, income restriction limits on what people were able to pay for those units. Making them, you know, workforce housing. And when, even at that point, when the market was, you know, down and trying to get financing, um, the units were, the project was at, added on to so they could put some, uh, market rate units on there, so that they could afford to actually complete the project. So, a lot of these projects that are anything to do with low income or workforce housing are really a mixed bag of things. Um, we've actually done deals, um, where, uh, it was sixteen different funders in order to get the project done over time with like Easter seals and other organizations. But, you know, Neighborworks and others, when they do that, they usually have four or five different sources between grants, loans, you know, refis, things like that, so. Um, but so, when you're doing a lot of this, a lot of that kind of development doesn't fit really well to drop it into the middle of a neighborhood or something along that line. If there are already apartments around that area, well, that makes sense, but, you know, if there's, uh, you know, a ten acre space and somebody wants to put in, you know, a number of units at someplace. It doesn't really, it's not likely that it would get funded anyway, because it wouldn't have access to the other amenities, so. Just some general comments on, on where you're doing some of those. Be glad to help out on.
Thank you.
When you do that stuff.
Um.
Thank you.
So, real quick, I, I want to start with live work units and small workforce housing development. They're in here, and we haven't had any, so I think it's safer, easy enough to say, let's get rid of them. Would anybody disagree?
Would anybody what?
Disagree with that. We have this small workforce housing development and live work unit inside of our use table, yet we don't have any developments that have done that. So, we, I, I see it as, if, if nobody's using it, we should get rid of it.
I like the idea of live work units, but.
Nobody's using it.
Does anybody want to do?
It isn't happening.
Yeah. Uh.
Usually the thing would be taken out, then someone will say, oh, yeah, can, can you do this, and, uh.
Should have thought about it for the.
There's not one that I can think of in the entire state looking after them, either of those definitions.
Thank you, so that, I, I, to me, that seems like an easy, easy task. The next question is the multifamily workforce. I, I understand what Kelly is saying on if they're permitted, the conditional uses are still going to be part of the requirement, though they're no longer a conditional use. I think I would rather still keep it a conditional use wherever it goes. Um, that brings up the question, where, where does the board think this should go in something that we can present? I don't know if maybe Kelly or, or John or, or Kirsten adding on to the differences between C1, C2, C3, so on and so forth. It does seem like the board is saying, if I'm hearing the board right, we're saying, yes, we would rather permit this by conditional use in a commercial area than a residential area. Is that, that a fair assumption? So, the next question would be, what commercial area? Um, I personally am, would like to see this limited to one area. Um, I, I don't know if anybody in the board is in disagreement with that?
Full agreement.
Yeah, full agreement, but.
What do you mean?
One of the commercial.
So, one of the commercial areas as opposed to permitted through, to, in all.
All of them.
One, two, three, four, five, five of them.
Wise.
Just to, to, to narrow down where, where the multifamily workforce is allowed. You know, we, we've seen the data.
Significant.
Through the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission that presented to us and said, hey, look at all this statistic. The, the, the law is very vague and says you need to provide your fair share, but they don't tell you what your fair share is. The data that we saw from Southern New Hampshire is we've provided our fair share. So, I look at that as we've, we have done our part, we are still required to have this, put it in one spot.
So, just.
That's my.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with the comments so far. Um, just so I have the GIS up showing the zoning, just to give you an idea, and I will zoom in in just a moment. But, um, the Exit Five corridor and the 102 corridor, which I will zoom back to in a moment. So, this is Exit Five, as you can see, sorry, along twenty-eight here, Exit Five. That's where the bulk of our commercial is. The, uh, it's more commercial two in that area, the darker, uh, orangey color, like these parcels here. Uh, keep in mind, a lot of this is developed already. Um, just a note, not necessarily, take it, take from it what you will. Um, the lighter is the commercial one. Um, so that, that's the one area that is, uh, where most of our commercial is. And then, the 102 corridor has more parcels that are commercially zoned. Again, that lighter, orangey color is C1, and then the dark, dark red, bright red is commercial three.
Just real quick on commercial three, Kelly.
Mm-hmm.
Commercial three, the, the reasoning or designation between commer, for commercial three is supposed to be a buffer between your fully residential areas and your actual commercial one and two areas. So, it serves as a per, as a residential buffer to.
Correct.
Your commercial zones. Thank you.
So, I just pulled up the different, the C1, C2, C3, um, and the intent per the zoning ordinance. So, um, C1, uh, the intent is, that zoning district is town services, businesses. They're all geared towards commercial businesses, but I'll let you read through them, you get the idea. But, you want me to go back to the map?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, so again, primarily the exit five quarter and 102 quarter are where our commercial zones are. I would say it's, it's pretty clear that the commercial one district is the majority along 102. Whereas I think that the commercial, um, two is the majority in the north end of town. So, uh, and then I'd just to point out, the yellow is multifamily residential, so that's R3. And then the, this right here, which is actually the Vista Projects, is the mixed-use commercial, just for reference.
So, anybody have a preference here?
So I just have a question.
Sure.
So, we talked small workforce housing development, we, uh, excuse me, we talked dwelling multifamily workforce, and then we have, just above it, we have dwelling multifamily. Why, why do we wanna make the distinction to allow one in one zone and the other not be allowable?
That's fair. I think that's a very valid question. Absolutely.
So, yeah, good question. So that just makes me think of, like, the example of where you have the mix of market rate and workforce you could dictate allowing that or not, allowing the mix.
Yeah.
But as an example, we don't allow multifamily dwellings in AR1, but we're allowing it.
Right, yep.
For workforce multifamily dwellings.
Yeah.
I don't, that just doesn't drive in my mind.
No, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think make, make them match and, oh, good. I mean, personally, I don't see, I don't, I don't see how anybody, I don't see developers banging down the door to, to build this type of anything. It's so much work, there's so much paperwork, you're talking years probably to, to get something through. I'm looking at Greg for a nod, and he nodded. I mean, it's, it's, uh, anyway. So if you, if you just match them up, I think, I think Lynn has a great point, and then we're done with it.
Just so I'm clear, so just, so that would be, uh, taking it out of, so we're removing small workforce housing and live-work units in, in their entirety. And then we would remove, um, uh, the multifamily workhor, workforce by CUP from AR1.
That's how I see it.
And you're keeping it in R3, the commercial districts, the PUD and the overlay, the P, uh, 102 and 28 overlay districts? Only que, I guess the other question I wanna clarify is, in the R3, multifamily dwelling is permitted by right. Do you want workforce multifamily permitted by conditional use permit?
Um, how's the board feel right now?
I just wanna say that the path that we're going at, at this point, what we've been just talking about, kinda goes against what you said, which, which, which I liked, which was try to keep it to, to, to one area. I think if we can figure out, I know that there is all over the place, but I think if we can figure out a specific area, try to keep it in that area and make the options smaller. Like you said, we already, we already fulfilled our need, or even more, and we're not gonna restrict it, but at least we can put it in one particular area.
I agree.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree, I agree, I agree, and I agree to Lynn too.
I struggle with that, yeah.
It's, um.
The problem is the zones are all over town, so you, you say, let's keep it down to one area. You can't, because there's C1 all over town, there's C3 all over town.
But to the point of what Lynn is saying.
Then we need to restrict.
I don't know if discriminatory is the right word, but I get what Lynn's getting at.
Multifamily.
Then we'd have to look at multifamily as well into a restriction of multifamily, because realistically, what is the difference between them?
Income level.
They should match. Income level, exactly, that's it, so, you know.
It seems to me, based on what we were just looking at, on the different levels of, of commercial, just from a, C1 seems, it's not quite industrial, but it's kind of industrial light, let's say, you know? Whereas C2 seems to be a more appropriate area for this type of.
C1 is light commercial.
Yeah, so C1 is light commercial, and that would provide the amenities and everything. C2 is, is much heavier, they, uh.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I. I, I mix it up, I apologize.
Yeah, C1 is kinda like office parks.
Yeah, so I, I think C1 would be more appropriate in terms of, like, just fitting into the, I, the, the uses.
I think the reality of it is, we're almost kinda splitting hairs there, 'cause to the point of, how much is left of C1 and C2 in one area that is outside of actual legitimate redevelopment? How mu, how much is there? Do we just conditional use permit C1 and C2 for both multifamily and multifamily workforce?
And I think it's the same thing with R3. I think there's one piece of R3 left, and it's on Sanborn Road. Am I right?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
What's that?
And that's actually all part of. I was gonna say, that's all part of that bigger parcel, right?
It was on Sanborn Road, that was Charlie Evans.
And that's like the last undeveloped piece.
But it's not there, though. R3 is, is a red, right?
No, R3's yellow.
R3's the yellow. If I remember correctly, if you overlaid that with lots, there's two yellow lots there. One of them is part of the bigger purple lot, and the other one is just a totally separate lot.
One's got the tires on it, and one's Char, Charlie Evans.
Yeah.
So, so you can restrict R3 all you want, but there isn't very many options. I mean, there's only a few people, realistically, that did, that does workforce housing in the state. Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because you're having a whole accounting process in the back, back room that you have to, and, and most developers can't develop like that. So, um, so I have, just my two cents.
So, to, to move forward, to try to continue to, this conversation here, how's the board feel about multifamily dwellings and multifamily workforce being permitted through conditional use in C1 and C2?
Say that again?
How does the board feel for dwelling multifamily and dwelling multifamily workforce permitted through conditional use in C1 and C2? So it would remove multifamily in residential three, C3, C4, mixed-use commercial, and PUD. And then it would remove multifamily workforce from AR1, R3, C3, C4, mixed-use commercial, PUD, POD, and POD.
Just for clarity, you're saying for C1, C2, and C3 only, nowhere else, correct?
Yeah.
I'm saying the opposite, just to make sure I understand.
Yes, yes.
I think, I think, Mr. Chair, I think, I, I would lean towards trying to, the, the, the workforce thing in, in, in MUC, the multi-use commercial, just really fits. I, I think it fits even for non, non-family workforce, so, um, I don't know why you wouldn't keep it in, in the MUC.
I agree with that too. Yep.
Kelly, can you go to the multi-use commercial definition for us?
I think maybe to keep it simple, we just pull the workforce housing out of AR1, and that achieves our goal without getting into any of the other things that we've talked about. Because everything, that's the only one that seems pretty clear-cut. Everything else, we've had kind of a, well, maybe this, maybe that, but that one's blatant.
Yeah.
Want me to keep going, or, it's really just mixed use, so having a residential and commercial component. And then there's additional criteria with respect to setbacks, building heights.
I would agree with you. The point of a multifamily unit is inside of a mixed-use commercial area. I do agree with that. And to your point, allowing them by conditional use in a C1 or C2 is a mixed-use commercial. You know what I'm saying? Yeah.
The way not to get sued.
If you're gonna talk, you gotta come up.
If the objective is to reduce the number, the way not to get sued is let, put it in the maximum number of, uh, districts that, you know, for, as Johnny was saying, um, if you put it in R3, there's only one opportunity in the entire town. If you leave it in there and say, well, look, judge, we have it in R3, we have it in C1, we have it in C2, and we have it in the, the, the mixed-use commercial, there's no, you know, a developer's not going to be able to sue the town saying that you've overly restricted it, because you have it in a residential area, light commercial, and a, a mixed-used area. And it's still gonna end, but be, be developed. Anyplace you're gonna have apartment buildings that are build, to be built, it won't matter how it's financed. You know, and so it's really, it's really impossible to restrict just workforce housing. Because workforce housing is just a type of multifamily housing finance, it's not a type of building. And so in many places, you can't tell the difference between, you know, workforce housing and, you know, just regular apartment buildings. And for most of them to get built, they are gonna be mixed in between, you know, a, a, a mix of units. So if you just think of it as just apartment buildings, and these are the areas in town that you want to develop on, great. But if you have the additional pieces for workforce housing, so that you, again, so you have a defense when, if you are gonna be sued, is that, well, we have it in C1, we have it in C2, and we have it in this mixed commercial area. And you say, and the reason is, because it's along the transportation corridors. It's actually in where jobs are available, where people can walk to work and that. And that's pretty much an ironclad defense against, uh, any kind of suit by a developer.
So I think to Sean's point, what you're saying of removing it from the AR1 really is accomplishing.
What we want. It's the biggest zoning area in town, so it gets the most workforceing out without having any asterisks on it.
Correct.
And, and to Greg's point, it doesn't make sense having it there anyway, because it's, the roads aren't the way you want it to be, it's not close to anything, and.
Correct.
And for our residents in town, you know, they'll be happy, you know, workforce housing isn't going up next to them.
Correct. With that, in keeping dwelling multifamily and dwelling multifamily workforce together, dwelling multifamily, should we change that from permitted to conditional use, so that both of these match?
Yeah, I think you're saying, are you saying in R3 you wanna turn it to permitted for dwelling multifamily?
So dwelling, we're, we know that we wanna keep dwelling multifamily workforce as permitted through conditional use. What I'm saying is, we remove it from AR1, and then in dwelling multifamily, so they mimic each other, 'cause to Lynn's point, the only difference between them is, is, is an income qualification. Can, can we change that from permitted in R3 to conditional use in R3?
The only thing I wanna say with that is if, this seems a little bit discriminatory, if you're saying, we got a zone for multifamily, but it's, you, but for workforce, you have to come and get an additional.
And that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying, make them all conditional use.
Yeah, but then, if you, if you rule out multifamily in your town, you're gonna get sued because you ruled out multifamily in your town.
It's true, it's just to be clear, this is in.
So then make them both permitted.
There are two different conditional use permit criteria for multifamily R3, sorry, for multifamily in C1. It's not the same CUP review as workforce housing multifamily. So you're, it's two different criteria anyways. So even if you're saying, you're trying to line them up, they're still not gonna, it's two different review processes, still, if that makes sense.
So, go ahead.
One thing, uh.
I don't want that arm to get tired.
Oh, it's, it's good, especially when you get old, you know, to keep them up. I know, the workforce housing ordinance, uh, RS A674:58, which goes, I think, to the 61, it makes a reference to allowing it in the majority of land areas. I think that's why it was in AR1, just to satisfy that requirement. But maybe we need to look at that closely, and I like Sean's suggestion, but maybe this is something to, uh, pass by our attorney.
I don't see that, but.
So, di, di, in purposes of trying to keep us moving forward here, 'cause I feel like we're getting a little stale, removing the conditional use in AR1 for multifamily workforce, now permitting it in R3, so it matches multifamily dwelling, so that there's no difference in permitting process between multifamily and multifamily workforce, because to Lynn's point, that is almost discriminatory to the workforce side of things. To Giovanni's point, there really is only one piece of Lynn left that's not developed, that is residential three, of which we heard, you know, we don't wanna limit it so much from a legality standpoint. So let's permit it in R3, leave the conditions everywhere else, but remove it from the AR1 zone. And remove small workforce housing, 'cause nobody's done one of them. Remove live-work units, because nobody's done one of them. Is the board in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
And just to call something out with, if we proceed with that change, as I mentioned, there is a, so obviously, there is a conditional use permit process for workforce housing.
In general, so the conditional use would still have to stay there. Now I see what you're saying.
So, but, so if you're permitting it by right in R3, we would, we can simply take the, sorry, this criteria. I guess my question is, you still want the same criteria to apply? So we can just make a note, or add an additional section that says, in R3, this criteria.
Is not applicable.
It, well, that's my question, is, are you applying? It makes sense to me to still apply the criteria. It's just, you don't have to go through a CUP for it, and then I, I still question, well, why wouldn't you just do that across the board?
No, I know.
It's. And the reason that multifamily development, or dwellings are permitted in R3 is because that's the district. That's why they're permitted by right in R3, 'cause that is the district, so.
That is the district for multifamily.
And the, the CUP process for the workforce housing piece, in that instance, isn't, in my mind, discriminatory, because it's applied across the board in every district for workforce housing. That's how we permit workforce housing, is through that process, so. In my mind, that's not a concern, but.
Then we leave them the way we, they are, but remove it from the AR1 zone.
So the amendment would look like removing small workforce housing in its entirety, removing live-work units in their entirety, removing a multifamily workforce dwellings in AR1, keeping the multifamily workforce housing permitted by conditional use permit in all of the commercial zones, the PUD, and the 102 and 28 overlay districts.
Board good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. All right, moving on.
Okay. So, next, we have an entirely new ordinance, which is the solar ordinance.
Uh, Route 28 Performance Overlay First.
Okay, you got it.
If we're going in order.
Oh, is that the order?
Yeah, yeah.
Really? All right. So, 28 overlay. So the request, let me back up a little bit. So this was brought before the board. And, I do have it last, but, in, uh, I think about two years ago, we reviewed the 28 and 102 overlay at the same time. The outcome of that was, we just wanna look at 28 only. So that's what we've done, and again, we're talking about removing it in its entirety. So just as a little bit of history about the Performance Overlay District, it was originally adopted in 2002, and the intent at that time was to, um, keep in line with, again, at that time, the 1997 Master Plan, which, um, had objectives to regulate development and ensure, um, that the infrastructure in these cor, in that corridor could be supported, because that was during the expansion of I-93. because that was during the expansion of I ninety-three. And there was also an effort to limit big box stores at that time. So this overlay district imposes additional requirements as it relates to setbacks and landscape buffers, which again, the intent was to kind of reduce the buildable area, if you will, on these lots. And again, reduce the ability for those big box stores we were seeing at that time to come in. So removing the overlay in its entirety, the primary thing that it does is removes those additional dimensional restrictions or requirements. And in my view, it, especially in the exit five, which is the twenty-eight corridor, it opens up more opportunity for redevelopment. And from what I've heard from the board and the public is that that corridor is in desperate need of redevelopment. Obviously, it is pretty well-built out. As we just discussed previously, there are minimal vacant lots. So that's, that's the short. I'm happy to talk in more detail. But again, this was discussed with you previously, so any questions? Happy to get into more detail.
What does this look like? How do I wanna phrase this? To the conversation we just had of multifamily housing, we're now talking about the performance overlay district of Route twenty-eight.
Yep.
Does this change any of the requirements for multifamily housing inside of Route twenty-eight? So would it, i- if this overlay district was removed, would it attract more multifamily housing or less?
I wouldn't say it would attract more. So multifamily housing would remain permitted by conditional use permit through, because it is permitted by conditional use through, sorry, in the commercial zoning district. So that doesn't change. The primary change is the dimensional restrictions and requirements. So, I mean, I suppose you could argue that you're lifting additional dimensional requirements. And so you're potentially expanding a buildable area on certain lots. But we did, some of the information in your packets goes through the lots that are impacted. And there is a breakout of, or an analysis, I should say, of those parcels within the district and their status. And really, as you can see, there's, there's one undeveloped lot that's about three and a half, sorry, yeah, three and a half acres. Then you have the S and S Metals Lot that is not necessarily developed because it's a junkyard.
It's for sale.
But it's, and it's for sale, and we've just heard about it. As kind of the two lots that are, I guess, in my view, more available for, for development. As you can see too, we've, we've gone through and given input as to the ability for potential redevelopment. Again, there's really only a couple of instances where that's the case. These are, these are small lots already. And so having those additional dimensional requirements, it prohibits the ability to even redevelop, develop them.
And I think that was a lot of the conversation, this two years ago now, three years ago?
It was two and a half years ago at this point.
So I think that was a lot of the conversation was, you know, the board has recognized over and over again that the Route twenty-eight performance overlay district properties are, the board would like to see some good redevelopment for the town in that area.
You mean commercial?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and this, these dimensional requirements are making it almost, if not impossible, because of the size of these lots, to even really be able to get anything on them.
Yeah, and so.
So is resulting in what is currently between exit five and triangle.
Exactly. And the example that I think I used last time, I think it was under review at the time, but, is the sixteen-unit apartment development that was actually two lots and was merged.
Into one.
Really for the reason that it was unable, you had two very small lots that were unable to be utilized or in redeveloped unless they were merged, and then you got that, that one building on there. Still with the dimensional.
Requirements of the performance overlay.
Performance overlay, and that also has the conservation buffer on it. But again, that, I think it, I think it's a good example of redevelopment for two parcels that needed cleaning up. And I think it's a better use of the property. And so that's just one example that the reason that was able to happen is because they merged two lots.
The units, is that sixteen?
Sixteen. So those opportunities are few and far between as it stands right now with those additional dimensional requirements. So again, that's, as you highlighted, that was kind of the, the mindset of the board as to why you wanted to remove the, the overlay, is to allow for that redevelopment to occur.
What's the reasoning behind, our, our first go-along at this was one oh two and twenty-eight.
Yes.
We're just at twenty-eight now. Is there, should we be looking at one oh two and twenty-eight? Or do we feel as though it's not the right time to look at one oh two as well? Let me, let her go first. Let me let her go first.
So the feedback from the public at that time was very much favorable to twenty-eight and not so favorable to one oh two.
Correct.
One oh two is, is, is different. There are more AR one, not more, there's one or two AR one properties along one oh two that had some concerns about their ability to do various uses on the properties. So by the time we got through the planning board and the council, the ask was to not look at one oh two and to focus more on twenty-eight. So we can certainly look at one oh two. We, we did the same analysis to one oh two, but again, the.
Yeah, if I remember, the general consensus of the public was.
We actually.
It was, when, if you divided them by twenty-eight and one oh two.
Yep.
One oh two had, the public disagreed with it. Well, twenty-eight members of the public, landowners of that area.
Thank you, yeah, I was just wanting to clarify.
The landowners of twenty-eight were, were in favor of it. Whereas the landowners of one oh two were not in favor of it.
And just to, to emphasize that point, this process requires notification, once we get to that point, to each individual landowner for a part, that own parcels in this overlay district, which we will go through that same process when we're ready to go through the hearing.
Correct. Giovanni.
I was just gonna say that the, I think, at the time, we were discussing the entire POD, like Route one oh two and twenty-eight. And there was folks and, and, you know, to their credit, it affected their parcels on one oh two. So they wanted to protect their interests on one oh two. And so we tabled the whole thing. But I know most of the people on Route twenty-eight and everybody was very excited to see the Route twenty-eight POD.
Which is ultimately what brought this back up, was the conversation.
That's why I always say, we always split them up.
Yeah.
Because there's really no opposition to removing it on Route twenty-eight. And with regards to opening up more development, you still, you gotta remember, you still have restrictions on number of units that you could put in.
Yeah.
So the fact that you're eliminating some of these development criterias, you're not gonna get more than sixteen units on that, that same lot. I guess you could then go get another CUP for twenty-one or something like that, or twenty-four.
Up to twenty in one building.
Yeah. So it's not like it's gonna allow for two buildings of sixteen units. Still only gonna allow for one building of sixteen units.
Yeah, okay. Did you have your hands, oh no, you had your hand up.
Kelly said it perfectly.
She did. Left side. Anything to my left?
Nope.
Come my right, Anne.
I just have a question for Kelly. Is there anything going on in the property that's behind that medical building that's going in on Rockingham Road?
I have, just.
Oh, I, I mean, we.
This is that weird area that I've been asking us to try to avoid.
Okay, I was just wondering about that. I should have pointed toward you first. Because since that's in the equation now is for.
That's actually, so.
That's not in the performance.
Okay. Correct.
Correct.
It's not, that's not in the POD.
But, so I just want to, and again, I, I understand what you're saying, Anne, but I don't wanna get into what is going on on a.
Uh, yeah.
Unfelt piece of land. That's, that's where we get dangerous.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. D.
Can I talk about traffic?
Sure.
So my hope for, for pulling this out and bringing the land back to just the regular ordinances is that the, the exit five area has no support businesses for the people that live there. And as a result, all of the hundreds, five hundred, whatever, whatever it is, could be even a thousand, up off of Sanborn Road, people, if they want services, drugstore.
Yeah, they're going to dairy.
Banking, whatever, they're either going into dairy or they're, they're going cross-country to go to exit four on our cow path roads that everybody's complaining about that there's so much traffic. So my hope in, in doing this, if, if the board decides they wanna do it, is that it, it could provide opportunity for some of the ancillary services that the people, that the people that live at exit five would be able to have so that they wouldn't have to be all traveling through our cow path roads down to, to exit four to get those services.
So let me ask you a question on that, to really start to throw a wrench in things. We know these lots are very small. We've discussed the, the difficulty to develop the Route twenty-eight performance overlay district because of the extra-dimensional requirements that are put on these lots. We've identified that we, this area is in dire need of some sort of development to help bring this area to fruition. Is removing the performance overlay district the answer? Or is leaving the performance overlay district to make the dimensional requirements less restrictive than what is, what would be there if the overlay wasn't there? What if we're looking at this the other way? And the only reason I'm saying that is because the general conversation and consensus we have always gotten is, Route twenty-eight needs a lot of help. Route twenty-eight is this barren, it's got a rundown garage and this and that. Would it be more beneficial for us to, instead of remove the performance overlay district, leave it to relax the dimensional setbacks to actually be able to get some sort of commercial development into these postage stamp lots?
Mr. Chair, I see what you're saying. What would be, is, what's the difference?
So Kelly, what's a, or John, what are, what's a regular setback in a, what is that, C two? Is it C two up there? C one, C two? C one, C two. What's the standard setback in C one and C two? Without an overlay? I think it's like forty feet.
On the front.
Yeah, so I'm just using one example. It's forty feet on the front.
Sorry, here you go, sixty on the front, thirty side and rear.
That's not in the performance overlay.
Correct, that's in the commercial districts.
So what is it in the performance overlay?
So you have that, and you have an additional, I think it's a fifteen landscape buffer. Sorry, it's redlined in front of me. Yeah, fifteen-foot landscape buffer around the front and sides.
An additional green space, as I recall.
Landscape green space, yes.
So it's this plus the additional green space, which is taking your buildable lot and going like this. So what I'm asking, in purpose of, we've heard, I've heard it as long as I've been on this board, that Route twenty-eight's a mess. Is it worth leaving the overlay and going the other way with these setbacks?
What's it to you, what could benefit you of that?
Being able to.
You say make them less than C one and two?
No, so leaving the performance overlay district, but now the front setback is, say, twenty feet, and the sideback setbacks are fifteen feet, bringing your buildable lot to something that is buildable. Because again, all these lots are like, what, what commercial building can you put on an acre and a half lot?
Yeah, so just.
Just let me get through the board.
Okay.
No, I'm not, I wasn't talking to you.
No, no, I'm saying, you, you just said, actually, that it depends on the size of the building. Uh, so, just so you can see.
Yeah, look at page ten. Setback from the road, it's gonna be.
Right, so, sorry, it's redlined, but, right, the bigger the building, the further back it has to be. And then again, in addition to that, you have the landscape performance standards. So you have a front buffer area, you've got the side buffer areas. In addition to those buffer areas, there's plantings that you have to do every so many feet. So it's not just, you have a strip of land, it's additional buffering, things like that.
Where your parking can be located.
Right, you're right, exactly.
There's a lot of design criteria.
Correct.
So to be clear, the, the, the PUD makes it more restricted. And you have less buildable land to work with.
That's, this is what I'm saying.
So when you take it off, it's more buildable, and there's a chance, there could be a drugstore at exit five. If, I mean, you're still gonna have to combine lots, buy, buy a couple of lots and combine them. But they need a drugstore up there.
I think drugstores are going out of business.
Yeah, a bunch of other things. But at any rate, I think they need, they need services up there.
Yes.
My, my opinion. And that, that could help mitigate some of the traffic that's traveling all the way through our side roads down to the, the, all the services that are at exit four.
Correct. Giovanni.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chair. I like your thought process. But my, 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 the problem I'm challenged with is if we leave it on right now, when there's really no objection to the landowners in this area, they wanna see it gone, to then modify it, it's still in place. I hear what you're saying, and I think it's, I'd be all for it.
But we gotta get through this step first, is what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So, Mr. Chair, my understanding of the POD, and I think we captured this maybe a half hour ago, it was brought up and it was kind of put in place in twenty.
This all happened, this all happened because Home Depot came to town.
Well, well, there's that, but also the kind of the, but also like.
Close enough.
The, the big box kind of developed, that happened in the southern Hampshire region as well.
Correct, correct.
So I wasn't, I was in college during that time, so I wasn't really involved with the planning board.
Sure, rub it in.
Yeah. But I'm thinking, you know, my.
I was in, like, grade school.
Yeah, well. So where I, where I'm going with this is that. I really think that, that POD has kind of done its purpose at that time, for the community.
I agree.
And I think we do need to, and I would probably, you know, kind of encourage us to actually completely remove it. Really kind of to Johnny's point too, is that, oh, seems like it's a lot of more, it seems cleaner to me to, to remove it.
Just remove it.
So we can get the services for that community, for those villages up there. And, you know, to Tony's point, reduce traffic on one oh two. I really think from a planning standpoint, that is. you know, if, 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 when you're talking about, like, you know, so much traffic, there's so much this, there's so much that, it's because people are kind of driving to one central location to get basic needs that they, that they need. And if, if removing the overlay district accomplishes more services in that area, I think we should really kind of further explore that.
I just want to add to emphasize your point, Jeff. So you captured what I said, whatever, half an hour ago, and that the intention was, and this is two thousand two, twenty-plus years ago now, uh, to essentially get ready for I ninety-three expansion. It's obviously been expanded. Um, so the other piece of that is, these were, in, these overlay districts, the twenty-eight and one oh two, were always intended to be temporary. That was the intent. It wasn't intended to stick around for twenty years. So the intention was to remove them at some point in time in their entirety. Um, I, I agree with what you're saying in that there is a potential to look at um, this area, perhaps, maybe it's a different overlay district, maybe it's a different zoning district or something like that. But I do think step one is removing the Performance Overlay in, in twenty-eight in its entirety and seeing what that does.
So we turned over some rocks. I threw a monkey wrench in it, and we came back and said, don't do any of that. Let's stick with removing the Performance Overlay District.
Let's give the regular zoning a chance. See what happens.
Yep.
I remember years ago when McDonald's was trying to come in there. And then on that corner where the, uh, the doctor's office is going in, and behind that, a grocery store, small grocery store, going up on Vista Ridge Drive. And the residents around there, you know, um, they said no to the, the grocery store, and I think, um, they had issues to enter an, um, exit into the McDonald's property. I think that was the problem. It would have been a nice if it happened, but.
As, as somebody who lives in the village, I would love to have a McDonald's and a store and everything right there.
Yeah.
Like Subway?
Cause, yeah, yeah, Subway and Amato's.
He's fresh three months ago.
But, but yes, you're, 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 Tony's right. Everything goes to dairy or South Willow Street.
Yeah. I'm gonna go to Giovanni, and then I know I had a couple hands come up.
So, just to add more color to, uh, Ian's point in that project, the, it was the shops of London Dairy. It did get approved. It wasn't a shopping center. Um, it was gonna be some sort, some form of retail. And, um, the biggest problem back then, to Kelly's point, was that exit five was a failure. And then they did all the reconstruction of, uh, that entire exit and expanded ninety-three. That was, that was a major concern. I think it was Peter Lowen at the time when, uh, we were going through that.
Thank you. I think I, Robin, I think I saw you and Christine's hands up, if you want to come up real quick.
Thank you, Christine Perez. I'm afraid for London Dairy. Right now, there are eighteen zoning and districting bills coming before the Senate and the House. Um, I find some of them extremely scary. I have gone and testified against them at the State House as your representative. They are restricting, and they are gonna bring huge, huge restrictions over the entire state. My argument is, is that these would be statewide laws, and one size does not fit all. What is good for London Dairy certainly may not be the same that is good for Berlin or Mount Vernon or smaller towns.
I got a question for you real quick. I don't want to cut you off. Will this be specific to Route twenty-eight?
No, but I have to leave.
All right, that's fair.
Thank you. Um, my concern about these bills are, and I'm, I'm gonna think that you might want to, before you make any major changes to anything, you might want to wait and see if these go through. My fear is that these will go through, a lot of them, because two major groups in, at the state, Americans for Prosperity are all in favor of them, and New Hampshire Liberty Alliance, which Sean Faber is the chairman of, is in favor of all of these bills. Let me just give you a quick example of a couple of them. One is a moratorium. Yeah? Okay. So I just, before you do a lot, would you look into all these bills that are coming up that are gonna put huge restrictions on the town of London Dairy and what you can do? So, thank you.
Thank you. And I think you had your hand up as well.
Robin Stewart, five twenty-two Mammoth. Twenty-eight. I don't understand, because one, and it's like nobody has been listening to anything we've been saying. One oh two has, what, four lanes that go, and it's always clogged, plus they have turning lanes, always clogged. And you want to put more building on less land. Not, and, and we're not even talking about the things that are already in, because I know I can't talk about that, that are coming, and you can't get down these roads. How can you possibly make changes to the zoning without first looking at the infrastructure? And how, I don't know, about two years ago, people, I, I gathered, I don't know, I don't, maybe I misunderstood this, that residents said, yikes, can't wait to develop twenty-eight. I think maybe you need to have another look at what the residents are saying, because what I hear them say, when I come to these meetings, when we have our neighborhood meetings, is it needs to slow down until you guys start looking at how you're gonna manage this growth. It's, you can't just say, well, well, you know, the builders need more, less space so that they can make, put more stuff on, so that you're gonna clog these roads up more. I don't want another drugstore. I'll go down to Mammoth, I'll go down Mammoth Road to see where else. It's not clogging up Mammoth Road anymore than what twenty-eight is already clogged up, because it's a two-lane road. And it's dangerous now. People drive dangerously. We have a lot of trucks coming on because of Coca-Cola and the new place up the road further. What are you gonna do with all these, if you change the zoning and let people put bigger buildings on smaller lots and provide more, more people on our road? I feel like you guys haven't heard any of that being said over these past several months.
I trust.
I don't know, I feel like I've been screaming, and I go back to my neighborhood meeting, and I explain all this to everybody, and they're like, oh, no, they're gonna do something, but I came to this meeting by chance, and I'm, I'm just shocked that.
We, we are trying to find a solution of what we can do with the planning board. The many things. Infrastructure is not necessarily something that's in the planning board's purview. I agree that things that we approve in, things that we approve affect our infrastructure. I absolutely agree. However, the ongoing infrastructure problem of the town of London Dairy is inside of the purview of the council. And I'm optimistic, I have a few words for some of our council members that are here tonight, to, to begin to make action on what, what is something that we hear all the time as the planning board, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. But there's not one of us here that can put together a plan and then act on it the way the town council can.
Yeah, okay, I, I get that. But if you approve, if you say your part of it is that you can allow people to take a smaller lot and put one and a half times more what they should have been able to put on there, and, or what they were able to prior, and nobody has bothered to address the infrastructure, because you don't have any control over it, and I have no idea even who has any control, then it just creates a bigger problem, bigger problem, and a bigger problem, and everybody just throws up their hands and go, but it's not our fault. It's not our job. We don't have any control over that. And the other board says, well, we don't have any control, and in the meantime, we're all standing there suffering from all this.
I live right there. Trust me, I know.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I, I'm sorry, but we are listening. The fact that we, the fact that this has come up again, the second time in a year and a half, speaks to the fact that we are listening, and we are thinking, and we are trying to do something. It's not true that if we do this, somebody can build a building, uh, uh, one and a half times bigger on a smaller lot. That, that's just not true.
Okay, so tell me what's true. I mean, I must, might have misheard.
It's, 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 it's not one and a half times bigger.
I think, I think what we did do, and I did it on purpose, knowing exactly where we would end up is exactly why I did it. We, this board, we've heard him say it time and time again, we are trying to turn over rocks that have not been turned over in twenty years. So I asked a question, why don't we leave the Performance Overlay District and relax the requirements? I asked the question. The response was no, let's not do that. It was a pretty overwhelming response from the board. But still wanted to ask the question, so we could hear what the response would be.
Yeah, if I can finish my thought, please. Thank you. And it's, it's clear to me that, and I'm, I'm around town all day, every day, and I have been for decades. I see the traffic, I live the traffic, I drive the traffic, I smell the traffic because of the trucks. I'm all over this town all the time. There is no question in my mind, one person, right, one person's opinion. I'm not speaking for the board, I'm not speaking for the town council, I'm not speaking, it's just me. There is no question in my mind that if we provide essential services at exit five, the hundreds, if not thousands, of people that live in the exit five area will stop using the access roads and the feeder roads to get to Route one oh two.
You're, you're right, but why is that your major concern?
My mind, the state who is in control of Route twenty-eight and one oh two, will have to make the decision on whether at that point they're interested in expanding the road because of road failure or not. And road failure i- i- is, is a very complicated topic. And I've said a hundred times, traffic is a question of perception and tolerance. Right? Because one person's tolerance is not the same as another person's tolerance. The police department has, has, has presented at the town council time and time and time again, and also at the, at the, at the, um,
Traffic safety.
Traffic safety, thank you. Traffic's safety. What people are saying, there's a million accidents at the, at this intersection, and, and, and the police department says, we don't show that. That, that's not what our records show. For sure, since I came to town in nineteen seventy-eight, and you and I have already had this conversation at another meeting, there's no question since I came in nineteen seventy-eight, there's more traffic. My wife leads Crossroads Mall, um, um, Mammoth Road and one oh two. And in order to get back to Mammoth Road south, she goes east on one oh two, turns around by where the, at the lighted intersection at the post office, goes back down one oh two towards Nashua, and then takes a left south on Mammoth Road, because that's the safest way to do it. We didn't have to do that in nineteen seventy-eight.
Nope.
Because it wa, it wasn't even a signalized intersection then.
Charles wasn't even there then.
So, there was nothing there then. High Range Road was a dirt road. So, so there's no question that there's more traffic, but you know, you, you, you do what you gotta do. But back to what we're doing here tonight, part of what I said is because I am listening, and I am trying things, and I am reading through all these regulations that you've seen me show all, all the time to try and figure out how can we mitigate this thing? Okay, I had two, I had two epiphanies, two, two different times. One, one oh two has never been the same since Nashua built the River Walk, River View, whatever, just the other side of the river on the bridge. Okay, eighteen, eighteen hundred residents. Then up the street, they built another nine hundred. And guess where they're going? One oh two to exit four. Not all of them. Okay? That's causing a huge problem. That's not even London Dairy traffic, okay? So, the other epiphany that I had was one day, I, I was following a client out of whichever development it was, up off of Auburn Road, who went all the way down the feeder roads to exit four and, and, and stopped at the bank. And it hit me, oh my gosh, if we provide these services at exit five, or if we provide the opportunity for services, because we can't do that, all we can do is make the land available and hope that a developer will, will catch on. If we can provide those services there, then all of those people won't be driving all through all the feeder roads down to Route one oh two. And that will relieve some, not all, some of that pressure. If we stop development today, you know this.
I, I hope we would, but you won't.
You're a smart person, you know this. If we stop development today, no more development in London Dairy. That still doesn't fix the traffic problem. Because we can't control what comes out of Litchfield, what comes out of Hudson, what comes out of Manchester. We can't control any of that.
I, I, I totally agree with you. But where I live, we have gone and shown the town council, the, and the police department, and the, it has nothing to do with the police, because they're always up our roads. But we've shown them the accidents. We have constant accidents up at Page and Mammoth, or Grinnier and Mammoth, whatever you call that intersection there. And they have, we have them on cameras. We presented them, we present the whole.
And you testify that the stop signs are working?
No, I wouldn't say that, not, well, they were. They were working.
Say it, I heard you say it.
You didn't hear me say it.
Yeah, I did.
I live right there, and there.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, going too far.
Which stop sign?
And they're, they're, they slowed down everything for a while. And now, because of all the other traffic up on Grinnier or Page, now we, we've got that back, and summer's coming, so it will just add more. So nobody wants to keep stopping. Sometimes they do, and the police do a really good job. They sit there in, in a back little section, and when they're there, people stop at the stop sign by the rail truck, and when they're not there, people don't stop at the stop sign. And it, it all becomes a moot point, because I don't think traffic's a convenience thing. I think traffic is our lifestyle. It's why we bought our houses here, it's why we live here, it's how we want our lives to be within reason. Of course, there's growth, but this is chaotic. And if we continue to just keep building, building on top of, more on top of what we have, then how do you manage anything for the people who've already been here? I understand what you're saying, and, and I certainly respect it. I understand that people are coming from other towns, and that's what we're gonna be inviting in. The more businesses we keep creating in, in residential-type areas, the more people are gonna come from other towns to do it.
Yeah, but right now, we're talking about, we're talking about Route twenty-eight.
Mm-hmm, so am I.
Commercial.
It's commercial. It's commer, I'm, I'm looking, the map was up there a minute ago. It's commercial one, commercial two.
Right.
Yeah, it's just rezoned.
It's commercial land.
I, I understand that.
I think it's important to understand it, although Tony proposed it. We can't, you know, we can't stop development, nor, you know, but what we're looking at is a district that we want to, that we want to encourage to be rejuvenized, because it, the area is a little bit, let's say, rundown, and it's hard to do that with, with the Performance Overlay.
So if you throw a McDonald's there, what do you think's gonna happen? Just saying. What do you think? No more traffic? It's gonna lower it? I mean, what's gonna happen?
I, I, I mean, there's already people there that are going, there's, there's, there's sub shops there, there's all kinds of different things.
There's Subway, which, yes, there, there is a Subway. It's not the same as like a McDonald's or something that's gonna cause a lot.
I do want to keep this moving a little bit. Hold on one sec. I, I know you had something.
Yeah, just, just real quick. Um, I can practically see your house from my house. So I am experiencing everything you are experiencing. This area is already developed. It's not like we are cutting down trees. We would be cutting down trees to encourage growth here. This area is already developed. I was stuck on twenty-eight last week while an eighteen-wheeler desperately tried to back up into S and S Metals, and twenty minutes later, I was, I was able to get past. This is, it, it is, it is, yes, the traffic is bad, but it, it, again, it, it would be, if anything, replacing one development for another development. And you could say, well, the traffic will get worse, but if it's done right, it may not. If it's done right with the proper, um, you know, curb cuts and, you know, not, not twenty, not, uh, South Willow Street where there's an, there's an entrance every fifty feet, but if it's done right as opposed to the hodgepodge that we have now that is developed organically over time, it may actually get better. Right now, it is a mess, both aesthetically.
They go through our roads. They go through our roads. If you know, if you live there, you know that.
I'm on Paul Road. Those stop signs took everybody down my road. I see eighteen wheelers go flying down my road all day long.
Yep.
So I, I understand exactly what you're saying. But again, we're not talking about paving over bucolic meadow, meadows. We're talking about the possibility of, um, taking an undervalued lot and turning it into something that could be more useful for the town, that if done right, could actually make things better.
I just hope that ever, and I, and I'll finish with this, that you look at the bigger picture. It's not just one little segment of, I'll build this here. It's how it affects everyone. It's the infrastructure, it's giving people tax breaks while the rest of our taxes keep going up. There's a lot to this besides this one little decision that we make here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, real quick?
Only on 28 and 102, okay?
Yeah. John Farrell, for Hancock Drive. So there's only three people in the room, maybe Lynn, there might be four, that were here when we put the P O D in place. Art, John, me, so there's three of us. Well, you weren't on the board, but you were here.
Yeah.
The Performance Overlay Districts were done for one reason and one reason only, to stop and shut down development. That's why it was done. That was the whole purpose behind it, and that's why it was done. If you look at the 102 P O D and you go east from Mammoth Road, it's easy, just lift it. If you go west, you need to do some work and do some grandfathering, and figure out how to do that, and what does that look like. 102 is a much easier, you know, answer than probably 28 is tonight. 28, what sits at Exit Ten now and hooks it, was proposed for Exit Five. The minute it was caught wind of, the P O D went in place in less than thirty days. So it was not a lot of work put behind it. It was not a lot of, Tim Thompson whipped something up on the, on his whiteboard with a couple of us, and hello, the P O D is here, because the 102 one was already in place. It has outlived its usefulness. Lift it, change it, it serves no purpose anymore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may?
Yep.
Um, in reference to the legislation, and I had watched over four hours of public comment at the legislation up in Concord, there is nothing in there proposed that will interfere with any of the changes we were talking about today at all. So no matter if they pass or fail, we could implement every single one of these today, and it would make a difference.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would concur with that as well, having watched a lot of it myself. Um, the, as, as I understand it, it's cursory knowledge, but the, as I look through it, it's mostly the legislators trying to legislate down to the town level to us, saying they want acreage change to be smaller, so that houses could be, so that more houses could be built. One of the ones that's most favorable is going down to acre and a half zoning per, per house. Down to one and a half, not a maximum of one and a half, down to one and a half, because there are many towns in the North Country that have five acre zoning. That's what they're trying to do. To Christine's point, it's really hard in New Hampshire nowadays to legislate, because you have north of Concord and you have south of Concord. You try to make one bill for the entire state, usually doesn't work for either, or more for one than the other. So, um, there's no, nothing going on in Concord that's talking about commercial anything um, that I, that I saw at the time, so, just my two cents. Thank you.
There's some issues there, though.
I concur also, because when I've read through the, uh, Miss Association, they have weekly legislative bulletins, and it gives a lot of info there, and then you can go track the individual bills. So, I'm in agreement there that we can, we can move ahead with this, because legislation does not deal with it.
Well, that's all.
Who knows, next year.
With, with that, uh, just to recap and continue moving here, uh, we would be looking to, if I'm understanding this correctly from the board, we would just be looking to remove the Route 28 Performance Overlay District. Nothing more, nothing less.
Yes.
Correct?
Right.
Okay. All right. Solar ordinance.
Good.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may take the word of the discussion on the zoning ordinance. So, a little bit of background. Uh, so I'm the chairman of the Utilities Committee, and, uh, as a part of that committee, we have a, an Energy Subcommittee. And the Energy Subcommittee is looking at different ways of, I'd wanna say, different ways of implementing good energy policy that, uh, that would benefit the citizens of Londonderry. Uh, the committee under, started facilitating a project here in town, a, a larger commercial solar array project. And as we dove into the project, we discovered that the zoning regulations in town are basically silent. Any type of solar project, any type of solar usage, uh, you know, getting right down to a, a private solar array on your roof. It's, it's, doesn't say you can't do it, it, just it's silent on it. And which kind of surprised me, because we do have a section in the zoning ordinance dealing with wind energy. So, I don't know why we did one without the other, but that was a long time ago when that happened. So, working at, uh, working on this project, and identifying a couple of other potential projects in town, uh, we really figured that we needed to update the zoning ordinance to address zoning, so that a developer, or any private individual, private entity wishing to, uh, do something with solar on their property could do it. They would know what the rules are. And, uh, the rules would be fair to everybody and well-known to everybody and consistent across the board. So with that said, tonight, I got, I should say earlier today, I received some feedback on the draft, uh, ordinance. It's in your packet. And, uh, I'm gonna respectfully ask that, uh, everybody on this board up here, take a look at that draft. Send me your comments, and, uh, Kristen and I will take those comments, and we'll incorporate them into the draft as appropriate. And that we will revisit this down the road when I think we have a, a good project. And one of the, you know, good comments we had is, uh, we're gonna reach out to, we're gonna try to find some stakeholders or some, I don't wanna say disinterested parties, but somebody outside of, uh, outside of town who can take a look at this and make sure that the ordinance is written in a way that they see is appropriate for what we're trying to accomplish here.
Question for you real quick, Lynn. So it sounds like you still have a little bit more work that you wanna do on this.
Yeah.
Coming out of tonight, I am gonna be looking to bringing the items we've discussed to a public hearing. Do you feel as though you're ready for this to be in a public hearing, or you want more time on it?
So what would be your time, timeframe for having the public hearing?
I would say within the next thirty days.
I would say if we had a public hearing in June, that we would be ready for that.
Okay.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
For some reason, after the, the meetings are over, the accessibility of what's in our packet sometimes goes away, for some reason, and you can't get at it.
Yeah, the link explodes.
I wanna review this. Is there, is there something I'm doing wrong, or a way I can get at it?
So that should be resolved at this point in going forward, because we no longer have to use Dropbox. So this is all on the website?
Yeah, this is all links on the website.
Accessible to any and all.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I needed. Appreciate it.
And just to, just to emphasize, 'cause I'm over the moon about this. Going forward, uh, the applications as well. So for example, your May seventh agenda will look just like this, and we're going to link all of the materials, the site plans, et cetera, as this. So they should be available as long as website's available.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
That makes the website update project.
Doesn't it?
Mr. Chair.
Step in the right direction.
Mr. Chair, good.
Yes, sir.
I had a question for Lynn. When we review it, what would you like us to look to, to give you like comments, or like, what's your overall stated, uh, you know, what do you wanna see more of, less of, like?
I don't wanna say it's what we would do in this for, in this forum that we're having tonight. You know, I'm not expecting anybody to be an expert in the solar field and...
No, that's why I'm asking the question.
No, no.
I don't know how to give you input.
So to give you a little background, the, uh, the ordinance is based on, uh, a model ordinance put out by the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah.
We also went to the town of Bedford and the town of...
Rochester.
Rochester, and looked at their ordinances, and we picked what we thought were the most appropriate, was, was the most appropriate language from those three sources to put this together.
And, and do you wanna encourage, like, use of it, or you wanna restrict the way it looks? Are we, how, what are you, what are you trying to get to?
I don't think we're, I'll say it this way, for a personal, somebody who wants to put solar in their backyard.
And if it's a question...
Anytime you put a regulation out, no, anytime you put a regulation out, somebody's not gonna be happy. So that's kinda where I'm coming from, right? But if you're a, a person putting a installation on your private residence on the roof or in the backyard, if it's a freestanding array on a pedestal in your backyard, you're gonna be somewhat restricted where you put it. You can't put it, you know, it's gonna be subject to setbacks like any other structure would be.
Can't put it right next to Tony's bathroom window?
No, and so, and so to that point, to help Giovanni, so my, I haven't read through the whole thing yet, but my comment will be, because there's one in town that is, that I find very offensive. I, I would, I would request to have in A R One, no post-mounted arrays or ground-mounted arrays of solar in an A R One district. I cannot imagine what it would look like, let's stick with Exit Five, with some of the developments up there, and someone puts a post array in their, in their backyard that's following the sun and spinning around and doing all the things that it does.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you probably know the one that I'm talking about.
I don't.
Well, there's, there's one, I'll show you.
Yeah.
In town that's on a post.
Please do.
High Range Road?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Too specific. It's your house.
No, I know.
At any rate, I just, I find it offensive. I wouldn't wanna live beside it, and I would not, not want to have, to let somebody put one up.
So the idea is to control the installation to the degree where something like that doesn't go up. I'm not, I can't comment on the specific installation you're talking on, because I'm not familiar with it. But that is the idea, is to put up, put, you know, enough of regulation out there where it's not gonna offend your abutters, it's not going to create a traffic hazard, it's not gonna create a hazard to airborne navigation. And it's gonna control how it gets permitted, uh, through, uh, having to come to the planning board if it's a commercial site, and having to just go to the building department if it's a residential site, that type of thing.
Yeah, it sounds good. I mean, it's, you know, people need to have their solar arrays. It just needs to not be obnoxious and offensive to the, a neighbor or a neighborhood or whatever, and um, so I think some regulations are necessary, just like everything else.
Yep.
So, yeah.
And, and really, the biggest question is coming up with some of these larger arrays, and where they're permitted to be, uh, put in and not, and then some of the controls around them in terms of setback and buffering and, and things like that as well. And noise and glare.
This essentially brings us into the twenty-first century, as far as this...
Yeah, that's, that's a great way to say it. And to the fact that we control, uh, wind turbines, which I don't think is a bad thing, I'm not saying that at all, but we control wind turbines, which, uh, we have none in town, or no commercial wind turbines that I'm aware of. But we do have a lot of solar arrays in town, just seems a little bit backwards as well.
Anything from the board?
No, I just, um, some, Mr. Chair, some initial comments. Um, Lynn, you and, you, the group that put this together are incredibly thorough, and, um, you know, I'm just kinda looking through the, the highlights, so. Giovanni, I think after you read this, you'll become an expert in solar, so.
Awesome. Mr. Ruff?
Yeah, and I just want to extend a nice thank you to Kelly and Kristen, John, and the planning staff for putting this all together, 'cause this is not easy stuff, what they've been doing, so. This requires a lot of, lot of time and a lot of tracing, because we get things all over the place in our, uh, our ordinance.
Gotta make progress.
Yep. Yep, and to Art's point, just to, just to, uh, throw a, kudos out to Kristen for, uh, helping write this solar ordinance, and we've been working together on getting this done, and she's been a great asset to making it happen.
Fantastic. All right, so it sounds like this one might hold off for a separate, uh, we could add it to an agenda item if, if we feel sees fit. Sounds like we wanna move forward with A, B, and C, and maybe just give a little bit more time on D.
Yep.
Give it time to...
Yeah.
I, I, I think it'll, I think the amendments that were forwarded to me, or the suggested edits, maybe is a better way to say it, will be resolved quickly. So I think in terms of having something for the June...
'Cause I would be looking...
I think it'd be very doable.
Oh, well, we might not even have time, 'cause it's already the twenty-fourth. I keep feeling like it's the second Wednesday of the month. Yeah, what I was asking is, can any of this make it on the second agenda of May?
Um...
I keep thinking it's the second meeting of the month, and it's not, it's the...
Well, I was trying to think the same, actually, because that's a lighter...
Yeah.
Agenda, um, but I don't, what's that?
I don't remember who's on the agenda.
It's twenty-three, Wilson.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's tight, but...
Let's try and get it on for second...
I will try. And just to make sure I'm clear, so it would be if we're shooting for May fourteen hearing.
Could you do that, Lynn?
Uh, I'll know tomorrow. I'll send a note out to you and Kelly.
There we go.
My only hesitation is about the overlay, because we have to notify every single...
Abutter.
Abutter.
Yeah.
But let me, let me work on that.
Yeah. Give me an answer by the end of the day tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
It's already only twelve hours away.
I can give it to you by nine o'clock.
You want it now.
Any day is eleven fifty-nine.
All right. Um, any other questions on zoning amendments before we move to planning board and town council dialogue? None. Well, there's only one counselor in the, the audience, so Officer Dan, please. He has to be here. Officer Dan, come on up, would you? This is gonna be incredibly brief. So, not, not necessarily. I'm gonna say my part real quick. I am a little bit frustrated. The way I look at this, how long ago did I ask for this? Week and a half ago, two weeks ago, something like that? How long ago did I ask for it?
For the council to be invited?
Yeah. Was it last week?
I believe so.
Yeah. So, I guess what I'm frustrated at is, I was hoping to come into this and be able to talk to the town council and get an idea of how the town council feels on what the planning board might need to do with regulations. We have been actively, over the past year, trying to wrap our hands around changing some regulations in town that we've heard loud and clear. The way I see this right now is there's two council members who give a damn about it, and three that didn't show up. I should say that, hold on, let me talk. I should say Ron was here, he had to leave, whatever, so be it. What I want, and if we have to do it on the town council's time, we'll do it on the town council's time, but what I want is for two boards to get in line for the first time ever, and have a real conversation of what needs to happen, because we have had, as you've heard tonight, over and over again, traffic has been an issue. Sean, I appreciate how much you have tried to bring traffic to the forefront of the council. What I wanna see is a way that it's gonna get fixed, right? I wanna see, John, what do we give you a year to try and even do anything with roadways?
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, to try and do anything with a roadway in town. That's almost laughable, in my opinion. What the hell are we gonna do with six hundred and fifty thousand dollars outside of shim and overlay a couple of roads every year? What are we gonna do?
Stop signs.
Stop signs. Those are free. Tony's paying for them.
Gladly.
So what I'm asking, and clearly it's gonna have to be another night, but I heard a lot of goals from the council at their last meeting about limiting development and, and changing how we can develop and, and all of this. And, and I came to this in hopes that we could have a dialogue of it between the planning board, the people who are up here taking applicants, and the town council. And the only thing I have is two members of the council, so I can't even get a, an opinion out of you guys, because I don't even have three members to get an idea of, of how we feel. So I am certainly frustrated by that. So I am certainly frustrated by that. I understand maybe a week is short notice. I'm hoping that we can do this again with the council present in its entirety, so we can have a real conversation. So the stuff that Sean's been trying to do and Sean's been trying to talk about, we can have some sort of actionable items on and we can make a difference instead of just talking about how we want to change something. Because that's all that's going on right now. And again, I go back to everybody's goals, which I loved, I think it was fantastic. There's a lot of goals inside of there that I agree with, that probably a lot of this board agrees with. But let's get together and talk about them and try and come up with a plan of how we can, one, what is realistic, number one. And number two, how we can actually begin to move and try and make some meaningful change. This is baby steps today of some, some items that, that we identified as easy enough to be able to change inside of a reasonable amount of time. We, the board, Kelly, we've worked together, we know of regulations that we want to work on, such as one of a PUD. We know and have realized and acknowledged that we need to work on them. But I want to get us all on the same page, so everybody's working in the same direction instead of two ships passing in the night. We can't do that tonight. As always, I appreciate you here.
Thank you.
Officer Dan. I appreciate you here.
Stop whipping the new guy here, all right? Only been here like two months, come on, give me a break, all right? And I understand where you're coming from Jake, and I've watched you come up to the council in the past asking for help.
I've asked for direction a million times and I still don't have it. And I can't affect change at this planning board level.
Exactly.
Without direction from my council.
Exactly.
Until I have that, there's only so much I can do. So I need an idea of what my council's expecting.
Chime in there, Sean.
Oh, no.
Come on, bail me out, Sean.
The new guy does all the work.
Yeah. No, I'm in full agreement Jake, I think, you know, we all need to get together on the same page. And maybe you have to come to the council meeting and start that dialogue that you originally did to get us.
And the reason I'd ask to invite you here is because it's a lot easier to get five people in a room than 12.
Yeah, and the thing I'd like to just add, I mean, it's not the same as being here, but Ted sends his apologies. He spent a long time on the phone with me today, and I just want to say that publicly to make sure that I knew where he stood, so we could have a productive conversation with at least his input in here. And then we, we almost had Ron, so we're, we're close.
Yep, but you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, I would really like to find a meeting, I have no problem, our meetings are long enough as they are. Nine thirteen and we're almost ready to go home is incredible.
That's better than us.
I have, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I have no problem having another meeting. But please, can we find a time where the town, the council, this group of people and the public can sit down and talk and that be the agenda item? And we can come up with realistic goals, not goals that we're throwing out there to throw out there and it, let's, as a board collectively, I'm not just talking about the council, let's, let's find some goals and not just identify a goal, but tell me how we're going to make that goal a reality. Tell me how we're going to affect the change and, and what that process looks like, instead of just continuing to talk about it. Which is what this board doesn't want to do anymore, is continue to talk about it.
I think if we have the meeting and just focus on the two boards talking instead of going through the ordinances and stuff like that, Ron might still be here. I know that, you know, we have one, Deb is out of town, so it's just one of those things.
Let's just find a way, what I'm asking is let's please, I'm relying on you two as the two that are here to please find a way to make this happen.
Well, I will bring it up, you know that, I won't, I'm not shy, so I will bring that up to the rest of the council.
Maybe it doesn't, like, maybe schedules don't line up with this many people, but maybe we find a way to communicate and get something. Because, I mean, even as a council, I'll say, we got to get on the same page.
I agree.
And that's, that's part of the challenge too, so.
Absolutely.
It's, I'll, I'll put my head together with some people and try to figure out some ways to make this happen.
Thank you.
But it's a good work session for us.
Oh, this has been a phenomenal work session. I'm just disappointed at one thing, because to me, this has been what I was sitting here waiting to talk about and I don't have a thing to talk about anymore.
If it's Officer Dan's point, I think maybe if we would have put them at the beginning, it would have been easier. And I would ask that if we go to town council to do the same thing, because I think 12 of us can plan to be there, but say 12 of us, some of the town council meetings go to midnight, so.
Midnight, that's cute. So my only rebuttal to that, my only rebuttal to that is we all volunteer and we decide that we want to be here. The members of the public don't necessarily decide they want to be here, but they wanted to talk about these workshop overviews and whatnot. So to me, if it is going to be built in a meeting, what I find is administrative is the last thing we do. Because that's what we did sign up for. I'm surprised you haven't just started. Usually you talk and then say, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Well, I want to unpack something with Dan, I say, you didn't like that zoning ordinance discussion?
Which one?
The one time I raised my hand and wait, you ignore me. What just happened? What just happened right there?
The floor is yours, sir.
What was that all about? Dan, thank you for staying.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Sean, appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
To the chair's point, a year or so ago, when you were not volunteering your time, a thousand hours a week.
It's just two Mondays a month.
This board proposed a building moratorium and sent it to the town council.
I was there, I watched it.
The town council had some, had some good talk about it and, and tabled it. What I wish, which was fine, but what I wish had happened was I wish that the, that the conversation had continued a little further. It got tabled, but then there was part B, and this is how we, this is the direction we want the planning board to go. And these are the things we want them to talk about, and these are the things that were, that, you know what I mean? That doesn't even take a meeting of, of, you know, trying to crazy, you know.
I want a solar room.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm a big into same room guy.
It's a lot easier to do that than it is.
Sure.
You know, it's easy to give us direction from one of your meetings, then we get the notes and Kelly tells us, you know, well, here's what the town council wants us to work on next or, or whatever. And so that's what I wish had happened at that meeting. I wasn't there that night, or I would have, from the floor, I would have suggested it. But, but, and that's okay, you know, it is what it is. One of the bigger deals that, that we've wrestled with for quite some time now, years, is that the general public, and it's partly our fault, but the general public really doesn't understand how this works. And they come here all the time and they want, and they ask us, what are you doing about traffic? We can't do anything about traffic, that's not what we do. We're a land planning board, you know that. But the general public doesn't know that and they get very frustrated. And if you read the social media, which I try not to do, but when my name comes up, I have to look at it. And, and, you know, and I look at it, I say, and I'm yelling at the screen saying, we, we can't control that. There's nothing that we can do in regards to that. Our job is to follow the RSAs and to follow the town rules and regulations and make sure the developers are doing that, right?
Correct.
So there's, there's a, there's a big disconnect in, between the town government and the general population. Whether they're voters or not, whether they choose to vote or not, whether the taxpayers are not, because they might be renters, so they're not taxpayers, doesn't matter. There's a disconnect there between the people who live in this town and how the government works. And I think together, all of us, need to try and figure out together, what can we do working together to bridge that gap and make it so that, so that the general public can understand how government works. You know, when Bob Slater and I were running around having all kinds of meetings about brick and mortar that was going on, and we were at Dunkin' Donuts and we were here one Saturday in a snowstorm, actually, I think, I think you came to that one. And, but, but at any rate, there was a gentleman that said, said to him, well, how big is your office? And Bob said, well, I work out of my house. And I'm telling this story because he, I tell, I tell the story a lot. He says, well, I work out of my house. He goes, no, at the district office, how big, how big is your office? Bob said, I don't have an office. He says, well, what do you mean? You mean you get paid all that money and you don't have an office in the district office? Okay, but wait, it gets worse. Hold on, this gentleman has lived in town for 19 years and was the president or whatever it was, the head of his condo association. And didn't know that there were two forms of government in Londonderry and that the school board was volunteer and they didn't have an office in the district office. That's our fault, right? There's got to be a way that, that, I, I wish I was smart enough to be able to figure it out, but as the new guy, that's your job now, to try and figure it out.
Thanks.
Along with the other 10,000 things. But, but I think we can all do a better job, right? Trying to, trying to help with the communication to help people understand. And people are busy, they don't have time to come to these meetings, they don't, they got 3.4 kids, they got 2.5 chickens that they're feeding. You know, and they're, they're, they're running up and down 93, going back and forth to work, trying to figure out what to do with the other half a day of kindergarten, because the kids came home at 12 and they thought they were at kindergarten all day. But Londonderry doesn't have that. Did you know that? Anyway.
I had no idea.
So, I had to get that in. So, so, you know, it's all of our faults, but there's got to be a way that we can all work together to, to make it happen somehow, some way.
Well, Tony, I have to say that.
Thank you for listening.
It's very hard to, to get people out sometimes. I mean, I know that, you know, the school board worked hard for the kindergarten and they just didn't get the votes out. You know, just recently, I've brought up the issue of 28 in Sanborn, how dangerous that is. We put stuff out there to parents and everything and yes, got tons of email, tons of phone calls, conversation with people, yes, I'm going to be there. They didn't show. I mean, people don't show up, so I mean, now, you know, I, I fully understand, you know, and yeah, I'm going to be there, but they think everybody else is going to go, so they don't. I, I think Jake probably, or I would like to do, I'm just one counselor, is probably have this meeting when we get our new town manager on board. Because I think that would be a, a great thing to get his, you know, thoughts and, and get him on board with this whole thing and see what he has.
Let's give him a month, his head's going to be spinning.
Yeah. Well.
Let's give him a month.
I'm meeting with him tomorrow, his, his head will really be spinning effort tomorrow, so. But I will definitely talk to him tomorrow about this and, you know, get him ready for it, but.
I agree with you, Dan, and to Tony's point, I think a lot of this is messaging. Because we see people come in here and they're absolutely frustrated, but in, in Facebook doesn't help. Planning is not an easy discipline to understand how these things work. These regulations are not easy. So it's not just as simple as we don't build another house in town, all our problems are fixed. Or when I see if we build three apartments, the schools are going to be flooded. The schools haven't been flooded in 25 years. We're not going to suddenly flood the schools tomorrow. So if we're starting with these unfactual fear-based things, instead of getting down to the problems we're trying to solve in this community? I mean, and I beat the horse about traffic, because traffic means to some people congestion, to some people it means speed, to some people it means there's, you know, four cars driving down my road and there used to be two. It just depends on who you're, so you've got to gear it to what we're trying to solve. And so we've got to really start writing this stuff down and going, I'm trying to solve X, here's the way to get there. I'm trying to solve the commercial distribution in town versus the residential and the, the tax base is falling on the residential right now and I want to fix that. There's different ways to solve these problems and they've got to go and form a cohesive plan. And that's not an easy thing for the general person to understand. So I understand their frustration when they come in here and they, they want answers and they want a quick solution, but some of these things aren't quick and some of these things require going through the regulations and being creative and working within the state RSAs to get this to the right spot. And I think that's where we've got to put a lot of heads together that want to have an honest conversation about solving the problem.
Exactly.
And it's difficult.
And that's why I think I want to see these two boards together, because I think both of these boards have that. They, we want, we are all like-minded that want to have the conversation to try and come up with a plan.
But I want to just share Jake, I mean, what Robin was saying about 28, you know, when you guys were talking about that point and I'm listening to both sides and, you know, unfortunately, 28 is a state road. So there's not, your hands are kind of tied on what you can do. But if you're trying to come out of Noise Road, Giovanni's, any of those businesses, Duncan's, it's brutal, you know? And I can understand what she's saying by adding another business, it's going to add more traffic. Is it going to be harder for people to get in and out of that, you know? So I, I can understand her, her frustration as well. And I understand the board's frustration because 28's a state road, I mean, you can only do so much and trying to get them to do anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We also haven't done much in, in the way of mitigation either, right? You've heard me screaming about stop signs for, before you were born, I think. But, but the, but the fact is, but the fact is. Sanborn Road, we've done nothing to mitigate. We've done nothing to, to try and fix it as, as a town, right? We can't do anything about 28, but we can stop people from trying to take a left going towards Dairy, not towards the highway, the other way off of Sanborn Road. Don't take the left at Poor Boys. Make people take a left to go to the, behind the gas station.
The gas station, correct.
To the signalized intersection and then take your left.
Yes.
Because the people that have taken the left are backing that road all the way up because for some reason they're in the right lane with their left blinker on.
Right.
I've been behind them, that was me beeping.
So that, that road has gotten much worse since, and again, unintended consequences, and as somebody who lives on Hall Road. When we put those stop signs in on Old Mammoth, it became much, much easier to just cut through, go down to Sanborn and cut onto Mammoth than go through all of those stop signs, which is what people used to do. So now you have many more people coming out of Sanborn and trying to cut on to 28. And, and again, unintended consequences. There's less people on Old Mammoth, people on Old Mammoth are happy.
Right.
Now you've got a much more dangerous intersection there. Because you're trying to cut out in about five feet gap. Because otherwise you're there for another five minutes.
That's where a comprehensive look at how these roads work, because everyone just keeps pushing over, not my road, pushes the traffic over to the next road. But people are going to go north and south in this town and it's not only going to be on 93 and it's not just going to be on Mammoth. So we've got to identify where they're supposed to go, how much, how much that road can handle and can we take all the traffic and go and slot them through the right roads? So we don't keep fixing it one intersection at a time, pushing the traffic over to the next road and causing three problems.
I mean, I know that last year, the state was out surveying up by the Triangle Mobile and I stopped and I talked to them and I'm like, finally going to look at putting a light up here? And they're like, no, we're looking, doing a roundabout. So, you know, maybe when that.
Latest thing is roundabouts.
Yeah, there's going to be a roundabout there, roundabout on Stone Edge and 28. So, I don't know, maybe when they're doing that Triangle Mobile, I don't know what their plans are to fix more of it.
I thought it was supposed to be already done by now, was it?
The first one?
The, the roundabout at the mobile station, that intersection, that was supposed to be fixed by now, I thought.
No, no.
It was on the tenure list.
Is it a signalized? Because the guy said to me, he said, no, it's going to be roundabout.
The Stone Edge. Giovanni, and then I know you had your hand up.
You know, the thing is though, and, you know, I heard this whole conversation with Route 28 and I hear that, you know, well, we shouldn't let that next person build because the traffic's already bad or redevelop their property or what have you, but.
All it's doing is taking money away from them.
Well, no, my, my point is, is that that poor person that owns that property is being singled out to say, you know what, everybody else developed their property, but now you can't develop yours because there's a traffic concern. When, you know, I was talking to Dave in the Public Works Department, he says, what we really need to do is have an assessment of all of our roads in the town and all the folks that. and all the folks that... And we grade the roads. I mean, Route twenty-eight's a state road, but all the other roads, you know, one oh-two's a state road, I think one twenty-eight is a state road.
Peabody.
But we have a lot of other roads. And we keep pushing, kicking the can down the road. But if we did an assessment of all of our roads in the town, we figured out which ones are the worst roads in the town. And then that's where we gotta... And everybody votes with their wallet. But if we want to fix these roads and start applying and starting to put a fix to them and we take the worst roads, we start building a coffer. John can't fix the roads at six hundred and fifty thousand a year. And we start putting money aside. We vote it in and you put it aside every year and you start fixing these roads. The worst road first, the second worst road second, you know? And you start fixing them. And that's really the solution. But it's just like everything else that gets on ballot. Everybody goes, well, let it fix my tax rate by a penny a thousand or what have you. And they don't wanna do it. But then when the next project comes in, because that person wants to develop their property, we complain about the roads, so.
But I mean, you've been around a long time and I think you'll probably agree that just overlaying these roads is just a waste. It's a waste of money.
It's not gonna be the fix.
No.
Yeah.
It's just a Band-Aid.
It was roadway management system. It's got nothing to do with capacity of the roadway, like Sean is saying.
Yeah.
So, what he's saying is, you're gonna spend all that money. We have the knowledge.
Traffic stays the same.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But they go faster because there's no potholes.
But you have traffic studies because you require them on every property, right? That gets redeveloped. You put them all together, you find out the solution that's gonna fix the problems.
But again, no... But what he's talking about is a roadway management system. So, all you're doing is grading the pavement. That's what you're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, totally different.
But take it to the next level. Now fix the problems.
Fixing potholes is not gonna increase the...
No, 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 but take it to the next level and improve the infrastructure that makes it a safe situation.
Well, I think grading the roadways goes in two things. It talks about roadway management as well as... I see it as grading the roadway as what it can handle, you know?
Anyway, we can't address... What I'm trying to say is, we can't address the problem without addressing the problem.
Correct.
Right.
But I mean, between Dave Wally and John Trotter, I bet you they could write a list right now of the roads. And I think that list needs to be made of what, like what Giovanni was saying. These are the roads that need to be put on a list somewhere. And maybe it's not done all at the same time. And maybe the people don't approve it, but somewhere in the budget, we have to figure out, okay, we're gonna fix two roads a year, whatever it is. How many is it? How long? Take ten years, twenty years? Because people have been talking about the same road for decades, some of them, right? And we've seen some of them in person that have been, okay, let's just do this to it and it's okay for now, but let's work on fixing all the problems. At least the first part of it is identifying all those.
I think it'd be similar to...
Oh, no, Dan.
I was gonna say, it's similar to CIP, all right? That you would set up the roads in that situation, which would be a great idea because then you know, this is the one that needs the most work and let's have a plan on attacking these.
It only takes money.
There you go.
To do it.
Tony?
That's not an inexpensive...
Write out a check.
How many miles of roads do we have?
Hundred and ninety-two.
Hundred and ninety-two miles of roads. And I'm not disagreeing with you. Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you, Dan. I'm just saying, all it takes is money.
Yep.
To do something like that. And I would argue that that doesn't fix the traffic problem.
No.
No.
But I still think it needs to be done. I think it's long overdue. But we still need to... I would argue, if we're gonna spend some money, we gotta do comprehensive traffic mitigation. What do we do? Why is it that we have high-range road for the last seventy-five years is exactly the same as it was seventy-five years ago? And the traffic has, what, a hundredfold? And there's no plan in place to mitigate the traffic then or now. And there's ways to do it. Other municipalities have done it. You know, I travel all over the country and all over the world, actually, and I see what other places are doing. And they have... They're actively mitigating the traffic by a whole bunch of different things. Some of them are whiz-bang and some of them are as simple as a stop sign. But they're doing something, you know? And but it takes a plan. It takes a plan to do that. Jeff?
Prefer the company.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
That's why, a few things. I think having a collaboration between the planning board and town council, having honest conversations to really kinda get to what that plan to the plan really is, right? You know, we can... You know, obviously, we'll sit here and do, we can say, we need, you know, we need this to fix that and all costs money, you know, and such. One thing that I really wanted to kind of also look at is the discussion on Route twenty-eight. Theoretically, and please, if this is wrong, experts in the room will definitely tell me it's wrong. Theoretically, we change the zoning there, encourage redevelopment in that area. That's going to say to the state, hey...
Get this on your radar.
Get this on the radar to fix it. Now, but us discussing changing the zoning there, it doesn't mean that we're gonna have a McDonald's, a drugstore, Taco Bell, and whatever else I can't really think of because Starbucks, obviously, don't get out that much. But having that stuff there is going to impact that area and from a long-range planning perspective, would assist with mitigating some of those efforts and that's, you know, that start of town. Now, it's hard for the general public and it's even hard for probably, you know, folks that do live on that to really kind of see that long-term vision. So, I think that's where the education comes in of like, why we're kinda going down this road to understand and to really kinda look at it from a long-range plan. So, I think, you know, just to close this out, the collaboration between both of our boards is, you know, between the council and the board is paramount and, you know, kind of, you know, that partnership, you know, is needed and really just understanding what both can do for our, for the citizens of Londonderry and help through that will is definitely time well spent, so.
I would like to say, to Mr. D's point, everything costs money. I have yet to find somebody who would say they wouldn't wanna spend money on trying to fix traffic in town. You know, I think that's something that you could see the majority of the town get behind so long as they had a good comprehensive plan and understanding.
Capital improvement.
Yes. Understanding of where their money is going to go. I think you would have a massive amount of support in the town even though it's going to cost them money because it's actually gonna affect them. Everybody in here is affected by traffic. Not everybody's affected by kindergarten.
If I may.
Before you do, I know you had your hand up before. I make you wait, sorry. Well, it's about what you're talking about.
That's fair. Just go and order.
Let me take a second. Greg Carson. I keep... I've heard four times, it's really amazed me that, well, it's twenty-eight, it's a state road. We can't do anything about it. You know, the chairman of the New Hampshire House Transportation Committee for the last twenty years until he became speaker is from Londonderry. The Senate President, I'm not being biased in any way, is from Londonderry. I'm pretty sure I know exactly where she lives. And so, you know, the thing is, if you actually have a request, you know, you have to actually bring it to them. You know, write down what it is that you were looking for because they are the ones that, right now particularly, the two of them have a huge amount of control over the purse strings of the state. But, you know, any things that's gonna be done, you know, in line with twenty-eight is, it takes multiple years to get it in a plan. But that doesn't mean there can't be revisions along the way. But, you know, if you wanna get it on the radar for an upgrade and you've gotta get it to them so that they can make sure that it gets there, not just the town requesting this, the Highway Department. Yet we have, as I said, we have seven state reps and a state senator who, you know, all could be advocating for that. But particularly where the unique circumstance that we're in right now, at least for the next, you know, year and a half or so, a little more than a year and a half. You know, we have a... This is the opportunity to take it, you know? And so, put something together, get it in front of them because they have staff that can get it to that, you know, the Highway Department and, you know, give it a good nudge along the way. Those opportunities don't come up very often. And certainly, this kind of opportunity is only happening once other in the state. Salem got all the benefit for that, so. But just keep that in mind. I mean, just ask. I mean, you know, get whatever you want to them so that they can actually take that forward. Because if you just say, oh, well, you wanna do something about twenty-eight, I mean, they're not planning people and they're not highway people or whatever. You've gotta tell them what you want so that they can have something they can articulate.
Wouldn't it be most effective, though, to have it come from the planning board and the council?
Yeah, well, I don't think it really, you know, I mean, in terms of either Sherm or Sharon, it doesn't really matter. But, you know, it's... Makes a big difference if you have a plan from the council and the board or whatever, but particularly from the council, coming from the council so that they have something solid they can take and push to the Highway Department, you know, and get it on the many multi-year plans that are part of that. But, you know, there are tweaks that can be done along the way that don't necessarily need to get fully into the, you know, the ten-year plan or that. So, just keep it in mind because that's what they're there for. Instead of just like little bits of bills and this one's gonna scare the heck out of everybody and the world's gonna end if it passes or something like that, so.
Thank you. Mr. Farrell.
So, you're greatly underestimating as the planning board how much power you have. You don't need the town council. You have the tools today. It's called the CIP. That's your strategic plan to go forward. Bet for, pass the bond for twenty million dollars to do roads. Take your ideas to the CIP. It's a plan. It's a six-year plan. It took ten years to change the speed limit on one oh-two from fifty-five to forty-five. It took thirty-five years to build four A, but it all started someplace. The CIP is one of the strongest tools you have and it's underutilized. And it's your tool. It's your authority. You get to dictate where you want things to go strategically. Councils change. There's more time here with you. You can put the time, you're appointed. Use the tools available to you. You have way more authority than you understand. You don't need their permission. You don't need the council's input.
No, but we want it.
But bring them a plan. This is what we wanna do. Don't ask them, tell them. And you have the tools and the authority to do it.
Martha Smith, thirty-eight, Chester Drive. I thought that there was a plan for like a long-term plan, Southern New Hampshire planning was working on making twenty-eight more lanes. Am I completely off-base on that?
There's a corridor study that's underway.
And how long has that been underway? Just curious.
I think it just started getting geared up again.
Oh, it started getting geared up again. So, it's been in the works for a long time, but they're recognizing it again now.
Correct. Looking at the...
They did put more...
Looking at twenty-eight corridor.
They did put more lanes all the way down to Vista Ridge Drive.
Right.
So, that did expand. There used to be two lanes. When they reconstructed the exit, they put it, actually passed it a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I thought that...
The gas station, it basically ends at their entrance.
Yeah.
John.
So, the other part of it that you guys don't understand, though, too, this... So, there's a lot of political pressure from that DOT gets. So, for instance, taking the left onto Perkins. You were around, right? Back when ninety... When the expansion of ninety-three. John, you were around as well. They wanted to eliminate that, taking the left onto Perkins.
Yeah.
Because the idea was to go all the way to Vista Ridge and take that left. Again, it dispersed that, all that traffic.
Right.
And it was political pressure from some of the residents.
Yeah.
So, that died.
Okay.
It was the left off of, yeah, heading easterly on twenty-eight and taking the left onto Auburn Road. The same deal with that. They were supposed to go to the Irving Station, take the left. Political pressure. So, not everybody's on the same page. You said it all, you know? Even where I live. I live in a much smaller community and y'all live under a rock or what? Amazing.
It is amazing.
Yeah.
Oh, John.
Kevin Smith, Six King Philip Drive. And no, I don't represent a pharmacy or a bank, so. Get that out... Let's get that out of the way. No gas stations either. Not right now, Dan.
Incredible.
Just a couple of comments. One is, I think there were a lot of great comments and questions asked here this evening, particularly around the traffic issue. Tony D, to your point, you know, it's an easy thing just to say, oh, all the traffic is a result of the new growth that's happened in town. But if you watch the traffic patterns, it's not all coming from Londonderry. To your point, there's a lot of cut-through traffic. I see a lot of Massachusetts plates when I'm driving around town. And I think another thing, too, is I think a lot of the traffic patterns changed after COVID where you had people who were maybe commuting out of town five days a week now are home more often during the week. I know I find myself in Market Basket during the day, during the week, and I'm like, doesn't anybody work? Right? No, there's a lot of people in there, especially at lunchtime.
Yeah.
There are. There's a lot of people there. So, I think there's... It's nuanced. It's not... There's not one silver bullet to say, well, this is the cause for the traffic. And so, I'm glad you guys are looking at it in depth. The other thing I would... I just wanna say is thank you. Sean, to your point, I think unfortunately, there have been misrepresentations or false allegations leveled at this board. But anyone who comes to these meetings, watches them on TV, will see that you do all listen. I think you're all very thoughtful. I think you're all very deliberate in your decision-making. It's not an easy job because you're trying to balance what are the best interests for the town but also adhering to state statutes and the local regulations. So, I appreciate the work that you all do. None of you are getting paid to sit here on a Thursday at ten o'clock at night and the ones who are, aren't getting paid enough. I'll let the new guy know that. But seriously, thank you for your service. Thank you for the work you do and it is appreciated by a lot of people in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public? Mrs. Ryan, anything?
Making a comment.
Yep. Dan have anything else to say? Officer Dan.
Nope, I don't have anything else. I got beat up enough.
Should've left.
What happens when you...
I follow on out.
Anything from the board?
Great meeting tonight.
I have one thing. I have one thing.
Excellent meeting.
Excellent meeting, Mr. Chair. Thank you for suggesting it. But also, I wanna change Arthur's nameplate to say Rain Man because there is not a meeting that goes by when a couple of times, There is not a meeting that goes by when a couple of times, all of a sudden an RSA comes out of the air. That was, that was 2007, it was a Wednesday, it was raining, I remember.
Longest meeting in 1998.
Every single meeting. So I think we should take his name off of that and just say Rain Man. And everybody will understand.
Yeah, I've looked, looked at the, especially statues, so even case law so much, it, eventually it sticks. But it is necessary. So you, you know, you're doing the right thing instead of, you know, treading on, you know, your own feelings. Feelings don't work in this business.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
Mr. Chair, just want to say one thing that was new to me tonight was what John, what John Farrell was saying. And I think that we need to put that somewhere on the list of things to look at. And he's got a point, like, I mean, the council's trying to do their, their thing, we're trying to do our thing. Maybe, maybe that's the idea. Maybe we do present them with a plan saying, this is our plan. You know, we work with John and, and others in town come up with a plan and then bring it to the town council. So I think we, that's something that, that was said that I don't think that should, I think it should be looked more into.
When does the CIP convene? I was just waiting my turn. So typically we start the process in May and/or June. So I will be sending out requests to the municipal departments and school in the next month or two. And then we will start our meeting process, six or more per charter. So we can certainly look at traffic as, in, in the way to place that general topic. Look at how we can place that into a, into the CIP.
Awesome. I think that's a effective tool and probably a good tool to, to see how we can definitely leverage it. And, you know, having been chair of the CIP, you know, and taking a sabbatical.
You're welcome.
No, I've got, voted vice chair, so. Making that more, you know, have more kind of weight and, and such, so.
I agree. And just back to what I want to wrap up with, back to your point on present the council or something, so on and so forth. I do really think it's, we should get together as a collective unit so that way we all don't have 10 different agendas and we have one. I think in order to get anything done at this point, we need to have one plan. So make it a 10-minute agenda meet, time on every meeting. 10 minutes? I like it. Yeah, and then the next meeting, you all get to talk. I believe, but I.
Took him a while. Took him a couple seconds.
10 minutes, that's all you need.
What are you doing?
What I'm getting at is there seems to be a whole lot of irons in the fire and if everybody keeps throwing one in the fire, we're not going to get a thing done. So if we can get together as a group and just come up with one thing that we can all act on and agree on and make change on, we're going to get somewhere. Because right now it's, this, just, this is all fueled by, we're, we're not getting anywhere because of everything that's going on. So if we.
Traffic.
We can all get together and agree on one thing, let that be the one thing that we work on until we're at a point where we can say we've made a difference. Instead of, I want to do this, I want to do that, you want to do this, we want to do that, well, guess what? Not one of them's happening.
Yeah.
Jake, I want to agree, I agree with that. I mean, I think everybody working together, you can get accomplished more than going your way, we're going our way. Let's all try to work together. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Just to recap, I will do my best to have a hearing scheduled for what, the amendments we discussed for May 14th. If not May 14th, I will try for June 4th. The starting point to all of this discussion was a work session in March, which I presented a list of items. My thought is, let's get through the hearing process and I will bring that back to you at a later time to reassess and discuss which amendments are prepared for us to address next. So in other words, I'm saying, we're not going to be working on that list until we get some more clear direction from the council and planning board as to priorities for next steps. We will schedule with the four topics we discussed tonight for a hearing.
Yeah.
Sound good?
And from there, we keep marching on.
Okay.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you all. I know, I know this is an extra meeting, a third meeting of the month, which is actually a relatively early meeting. It's only 9:54, but. Well, let's stay another hour then. I've got a couple things to talk about. Thank you all for coming.